Okay, alright, we'll begin with a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Now, the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, before we begin, can you do a roll call attendance, please?
District one is running. Yes.
Yeah, okay. Here.
District three is six.
Here.
Mr. Cole, Mr. Mason.
President, sorry, the audio is a little, little bad.
District five, Mr. Clay.
Here.
District six, Ms. Shatwell.
Here.
District seven, Mr. Misses Gollum.
Here.
District eight, Ms. Fox.
Prior to tonight's meeting, Chairman Mason advised that he could not be present physically. According to school board policy, BDD, electronic participation in meetings from a remote location, the school board members, they participate in a meeting by electronic meetings when a quorum of the school board is physically assembled at the meeting location, and arrangements have been made for the voice of the remote participant to be heard by all persons at the meeting location. These requirements have been met, the board must approve the electronic participation by majority of vote of the members who are physically assembled. We need a motion to approve Chairman Mason's participation.
I move we approve the remote participation of Mr. Mason.
Motion on the floor, can I have a second?
Second.
If there's a motion and second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Chairman Mason, can you hear us okay?
It's a little spotty, but I think I can make it, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, thank you for making an effort to attend. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. The agenda was previously sent out to each board member prior to the meeting. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Okay, if there's a discussion, may I ask that all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The agenda has been approved. The next item on tonight's agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. We need a motion to approve.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been properly seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Bein' no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. We're now down to the citizen comments section of the agenda. Each participant will have three minutes to speak unless you're speaking on behalf of an organization, each time we'll give you five minutes. First person we have on tonight's agenda is Ms. Barbara Bass.
Do I need to move this? Can you hear me? Is it okay now? I was here last month, and you'll be rest assured and pleased that I will not come back again, this will be my last night. I'm a resident and a native of Halifax County, and I spoke last time about homework, discipline, and academics. And I would like to say about homework, talking about a committee, if you read your code for students, it's already in the handbook, the procedure to deal with excessive homework. But I was amazed in the newspaper this week when I read of the top ten students graduating from the high school and their biographies, and seven out of the ten said they only spent one to three hours a week in homework. And I hate to tell you, I used to give at least three hours worth of homework in one AP calculus class, so I was shocked at that. But I guess that's the way things happen. If you wanted to do a study, rather than homework, I would suggest a study on students using cell phones. I think if you followed a student from the time they got up in the morning until they went to bed at night, you would find that the time they spend on their cell phones more than exceeds the amount of time they spend on homework. Now, I did have the opportunity for the first time to read your handbook, and I'm sure you all have a copy and you've certainly read it. I was surprised at some of the restrictions for teachers, I don't know if I could teach for you today. For example, and I quote, "Teachers should not use instructional time to review and check homework." Well, if I'm teaching a new topic in mathematics and the previous topic depends on that, and a student asks me a question on previous homework, I probably would get fired because I would tell them and discuss that with them. I also found you had three themes on discipline, and we talked about that because most of you ran on no discipline in schools, I haven't seen your plan yet to solve that problem. But you have three themes for discipline for students in your handbook. One is lunch or after-school detention. I don't know what lunch detention is, I have no clue. Do they not eat? I mean, I have no idea about that. School and community service, I found that interesting, because I think if a student messes up or throws food in the cafeteria, then school discipline, they ought to have to clean the cafeteria the next day. If they destroy property in the bathrooms, they ought to have to re-clean it. Second one was school or community service. Now, I'm a believer in community service, if I had my way, every student would have to serve some, because I think it's important that they give back to the community. But I'm sure there are nonprofits in this area that would be delighted to have students working for them after school. And then restitution, I thought the third one was interesting. I don't know how if a student has monetary destruction of property, how a fourteen-year-old does retribution. So my suggestion is, and probably won't like it, is that you consider a statement in your handbook that says, "Parents are responsible for the behavior and action of their children." I don't understand why they aren't. So, I promise not to come back, but thank you. And I'm not to be reported in the newspaper. If I wanted it public, I'd write a letter to the editor. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bass. Next point on the agenda, we have Dr. Joseph Wilkins.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you Vice Chairman Lloyd, and I come to you behalf of myself today, I'm a 1993 graduate of Halifax County High School, currently live in Richmond, Virginia, and I know that we are currently building the high school, I know that there's also discussion regarding building a new sports complex, and I come to speak regarding the support of that. Coming from Halifax County back in 1993, I was an athlete, in a formal body, in a formal mind, I was an athlete before. But during that time, I came out of Halifax, I learned so much on the field, and I was able to actually matriculate into College of Women Mary, and I see that our valedictorian this year is going to Women Mary, so go try, love to hear that. And I actually walked on the team at Women Mary. I had a small scholarship here from Halifax County, which allowed me to get into Women Mary and have one year paid for. But what I learned on that football field right here in Halifax County allowed me to be able to earn a full scholarship there while I was there. Without it, I would not have been able to go. Again, athletic-wise, I was a pretty good athlete, but more than anything else, it taught me how to work well as a teammate, how to work hard on that field, and to get through day by day, and to find a way to just surpass what people think you can do. I stand in front of you today as the president of St. Francis Medical Center in Richmond, Virginia. Previously, I was the CEO at Withfield County Community Hospital out in Withfield, Virginia, far southwest, and before there, I was in Raleigh, West Virginia as a COO. But all of that would not have been possible if God had not blessed me with the relationships that I've built over the years through football. Currently, today, I also serve as the board president of the foundation board for the Virginia High School League. So, we are the arm of the foundation of the VHSL that is, that raises money. Every year, we give out scholarships, two, to every class, division throughout the state. We gave out thirteen this year, there are six classes, one male, one female for each class, and also, we give out a special recognition for another person who's overcome a lot. It's great to be able to give those funds out, because again, these are athletes that are going to go well, do things, and to really make their hometowns proud, but more than anything else, make our Commonwealth proud, and also make our nation even better. And it all starts at home, whether it's here in Halifax County, far southwest Virginia on the football field, that's where it starts, and this is an opportunity to help build that here in Halifax. I have one quote that I'm going to read, this is from Casey Rich, she won the award back in 2014, and she says, "I have scored goals, missed goals, cleared bars, and fallen on the pavement. These lessons may not get me into medical school, but they are just as valuable as memorizing the formulas that will. I have ribbons, medals, trophies, and scars. I didn't earn any of them in a classroom, but each one has been an important part of my education." And I can absolutely 100% understand what she is saying, because I stand in front of you today as a symbol of what sports can do. Again, God has absolutely put sports in my life to bring me to where I am today, and my son is with me today, my youngest son, he was, I say was, he just graduated from high school, so he ran track, he ran cross-country, and also, he learned as well. And again, so I'm here standing in front of you saying, if there's a way to bring better facilities here, so we can build the next generation, let's do it. Because there are a lot of great things that could be done, whether it's in Halifax, far southwest Virginia, Richmond, around the Commonwealth, around this nation, and it starts here at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilkins. Those are the only two people who signed up to speak under citizen comments tonight. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak? Before we move on to the next item on the agenda, the next item is the superintendent's comments.
Alright, well, good evening again, everyone, and welcome to everyone that is joining us remotely. And since we were together last, I'm happy to report that we graduated 320 seniors on June 1st. It was a wonderful event, and we wish each and every one of them well in their future endeavors, and I hope that they are taking me up on my challenge, and that they are taking the shoulder check challenge, you guys will be hearing more about that, but that is just a simple challenge to, a challenge all of them at graduation, to continue to check on each other, because it matters. And so, if any seniors are out there listening, remember, have you checked on your, the person that was to your right at graduation? Check on each other, it matters, it really does. So, I also want to thank everyone who has expressed so much concern over the accident, the construction accident that happened last week. The worker does continue to recover, and in just a little bit, Mr. Mareska will give us any updates on what he knows about the investigation, so we look forward to hearing from him. But again, please continue to pray for safe days and weeks and months ahead on that construction site. With that being said, we had asked prior to the accident, and I'll restate it again tonight, once again, during the summer months, please do not just show up over there to take a team, or to hit balls, or do anything on the baseball and softball field. During the school year, we have a very clearly communicated schedule with the construction folks of who's going to be there, who'd they know to look for, but during the summer, they are not anticipating folks to be there, and so they work on into the evening and too dark, and so again, it's an active construction site, and it is dangerous. So please, don't just show up over there. So, please, just, we want everyone to stay clear, we want everyone to stay safe, so I ask you again, just stay clear of the area. In other news, Sheriff Clark and I were notified today, and we are thrilled to announce that we were awarded a grant for seven resource officers next year in our schools, and that is a grant good for the next three years. We have some details to work out, we're going to be putting our heads together about what that, well, about what that looks like, we're partnering with our security company, and you know, again, we don't have all the details, but just wow. To be able to have that, we've got to get some folks hired, again, lots of details to work out, but he and I were talking on the phone today, that's a big deal, to be able to have that. So, just want to celebrate that. That's about what I have for now, I hope everyone's taking some time to just rest and rejuvenate and recoup in the summertime, and just thanks for everything you do.
Thank you, Dr. Husken.
Can we set something up for the people that want to use the services for the field to go to the junior high?
Yeah, the middle school field is still open, but we don't do facilities usage over the summer as much, they can contact Mr. Lewis, but we're just asking for safety reasons only, please stay off the high school, just stay off that baseball and softball, they can, yes, they can, they absolutely can.
How would he do that?
Just contact Mr. Lewis, just like they normally would for facilities usage. They certainly can.
Okay.
We try to run everything through facilities usage, if they can. If they do contact Ms. Mangum, then she would direct them to give them the number to contact Mr. Lewis, that way, everything is going through the right channels.
Chairman Mason, do you have any remarks tonight?
Just a few, Vice Chairman Lloyd, thank you so much. After everybody on the phone, and being able to be there in person, from time to time, things will come up and we'll miss a meeting, this just happens to be one of those times. Vice Chairman Lloyd, appreciate you taking the reins and running the show for us tonight. I would echo what Dr. Husken just said, you know, we hope and pray for the speedy recovery of the worker who was injured on the construction site last week. I think things are moving in the right direction, but please, continue to keep him in your thoughts and prayers. The exact cause of that accident is not known, I'm not sure Mr. Mareska is going to give us much of an update on that a little bit later. An investigation is underway, so I know anytime I'm in a store or anywhere, the public is anxious to know the exact cause, as am I, but if you would, please, just give us all time to play out and let them do what they need to do to get to the bottom of the exact cause of that. One theory that popped up, and I do believe it was maybe a quote in a newspaper, that we can put to rest, it certainly was not the wind. There certainly, again, we don't know the exact cause, but there was very little wind at all bowling that night, and certainly not near enough to move a wall of that magnitude. So, again, just give the process time to play out, and when we can, we will give you a report of the exact cause. In closing, again, to echo again what Dr. Husken said, graduation was a tremendous event. I know I can speak for Ms. Runyon to say that we were honored to take a little part in that. It was great being with all the graduates, and I want to say congratulations to all the graduates and to the class of 2024, and wish you all nothing but the best as you start the next phase of your journey. Thank you, Vice Chairman Lloyd, I'll turn it back over to you.
I will say it, Chairman Mason. I will move on, I have to work on this tonight, so I'll allude to the board, remember, committee reports, I do know this at the time of year where committees are not quite as active, but if any board member wants to offer a committee report. He updates, he reports. I do anticipate as we get closer to reopening the school, we'll be more to offer the form of committee reports. The next item we have on the agenda for tonight's recognitions.
Ms. Brizendine is going to come forward, and she will be recognizing some very special volunteers this evening.
Good evening, Chairman Mason, Vice Chairman Lloyd, Dr. Husken, and fellow board members. I'm pleased to introduce you to two of the most dependable people I know. They were both recognized by Special Olympics Virginia, and I wanted to make sure that you were aware and that we shared in their recognition. So Elaine and Barbara, will you come up? And while they are coming, I have people in my department here tonight, I'll ask them to stand, and South Boston Elementary School. If you guys could just stand and thank y'all for coming to support. So Halifax participates in Special Olympics, and we have for years, Barbara can tell you how many years, and we participate in Area 15. We might be in Region 8 as far as superintendents go, but we are Area 15 for Special Olympics. And so, these two ladies were recognized, and I want to read to you what Special Olympics wrote about them. We'll start with Elaine. Elaine received the Area Volunteer of the Year Award for Area 15. Elaine has been the co-ordinator for Area 15 Halifax County for more than 20 years. She is a school psychologist with Halifax County Public Schools, and is key to ensuring that students can participate in Special Olympics activities. For the last two years, Elaine has served as Area 15's bowling coordinator, arranging the practice and competition schedule, and organizing lane assignments and divisions for approximately 100 athletes from Halifax, Metlenburg, and Charlotte Counties. Elaine's role also includes serving as a coach or assistant coach for various other sports, and she has been a unified partner for bocce at area and state competitions. Elaine assists with fundraising activities, including being a member of the Area 15 Halifax County Polar Plunge Team. She advocates for athletes to have opportunities throughout the school year, and she supports our volunteers and families in many above and beyond ways. Congratulations, Elaine. It is, well, it is now. So then Barbara. Barbara's had a few more years. I have to remember that Barbara is not a member of my department, and sometimes those lines are blurred. But here's a little bit about Barbara for those of you that may not know. Barbara Haven is the heart of Area 15. She is a general education teacher at South Boston Elementary, who promotes inclusion in her classroom and in the community. She has dedicated her career to making Special Olympics accessible and possible for all athletes. She helps with transportation, assisting with day-to-day activities by connecting athletes to appropriate community resources. She assists them with paperwork, and she coaches. In addition, she continues to participate at regional, state, national, and world-level games. She's the reason some of our kids get to go to all of those events. At these events, she makes connections and brings that knowledge back to the local program. She strives to make practices and events as specific to the rules as she can get, ensuring athletes are being rewarded for their hard work and dedication to the sport, versus just simple participation. She runs the Area 15 program in a manner that provides respect for athletes and volunteers while showing the community the very best of the coaches, volunteers, and athletes. Barbara was awarded the Coach of the Year Lifetime Achievement Award for Special Olympics, so congratulations to all of them. Do we do pictures? Thank you guys for letting me do this tonight.
Before we move forward to the next item, special thank you to Ms. Brizendine, Barbara, and all the special recognition volunteers, thank you. Since we move forward, we're now under each report's, the first person on the agenda tonight is Mr. Mareska.
Good evening, thank you all for having me back here. Before I get started, regarding the incident that happened last weekend, unfortunately, construction accidents do happen, they are rare, but construction is inherently, can be inherently dangerous. What we know now, right, as of this moment, is frankly not that much. OSHA has come on board, they're helping the Masons complete the investigation, they're not done with it, we would hope that they have that done very soon, hopefully this week. But all we know right now is that that last Wednesday afternoon, the Masons completed a 30-foot wall, it's a firewall. It's the exact same wall on the other wing of the building, on the north wing of the building. We know, all we know right now is that the wall was completed, the workers were done with the work, they moved on, they got away from the wall, and they went on to other work, they sent two workers back to start dismantling the scaffolding. Something happened when they were dismantling the scaffolding. Scaffolding is not structural to the wall, so taking the scaffolding down did not cause this. It's not, what we know is it's not a design issue, it's not a constructibility issue. That exact same wall has been in place on the northern Section A wing of that building for two months through rain, wind, and everything, and it's standing fine. So that's all we know for right now. Thankfully, like Dr. Husken said, the worker's okay, and we got lucky, because that wall is not on the critical path of the schedule, which means minimal impact to the schedule. That being said, this is summertime, we have a lot of work, as Dr. Husken also mentioned. Right now, we have poured the column footers for the dining area, that's Area C, we're continuing the underground plumbing and electrical throughout the rest of the building. Steel erection is still making significant progress. Trusses and columns are set in the auditorium and the CTE areas, the steel decking is complete in the gym and classroom wings all the way up. We've poured slab-on-grade in the main gym, and all slabs on deck in both of the classroom wings now. We're framing the top of the gym for metal panels and windows. Building interior and masonry walls are going up, and we're also setting the door frames at the same time in the main gym. Constructing the new bus road and reshaping the bus parking has been, is one of our main things that we have to do right now where the kids are out. It's going to be completely different when they come back next semester, next fall, but we'll get with you on the routing and everything, we'll put that out to the public. We're also continuing a lot of new overhead ductwork, domestic water and hydraulic piping, and we've started putting the curbs in for the rooftop units. The rooftop units have started to arrive, the chillers are still expected to arrive this month as well. Brick installation is continuing, and the spray foam insulation is also continuing, it's the yellow spray foam you'll see on the side of the building here in a few minutes. Continuing electrical roughing and still pulling wires throughout the building, and roofing is scheduled to begin later this month. And finally, we have a mandatory pre-bid meeting being held this Wednesday at 1:00 PM to answer the RFP for the greenhouses. I'm hoping we get some support from the public on that this time. We also anticipate issuing an RFP to the public for cafeteria furniture, that should be out this week. Owner purchase update, not much has changed since last month, we're still looking at 1.1 and change tax savings, and year-to-date savings is still a 318, 432. Upcoming purchase orders, you can see we're still looking at several types of flooring, storefront glazing, casework, auditorium seating, and bleachers coming up. Photos, that's just an overall view of the site from the construction trailer, you see the spray foam, and you probably can't see if there are cold-form metal framing studs at the top of the gym, you might be able to see in a minute, but they're forming those for the metal panels. And here's your, we're constructing a new bus road in the bus loop, and that debris right there on the right is us tearing up your asphalt in your parking lot. And those are the footers for the columns at Main Street and the elevator, the elevator is right there on the bottom right, those columns, those footers, you can see, imagine the columns being on top of them, going straight up that, that's going to be your Main Street corridor. Those columns, those footers you can see, imagine the columns being on top of them going straight up that, that's gonna be your Main Street corridor. And this is your fitness room, you can see the duck works continuing in there. And here's the roof curbs, this is over the kitchen area, you see the decking's down, those roof curbs are where we set rooftop air healing units and other mechanical units, exhaust fans and that type of thing. And here's the, finishing up the steel and CTE and choir area, the choirs are the far back corner of that and your building trades is right there with a large roll-up door. And here is your auditorium, this is looking from the stage, as you can see, it's pretty sizable. And here's just another view, this is over, looking at the top of it, from the top down of the steel of the CTE, choir area on the left and auditorium on the right. And here's an overview of the main gym right now, you can see that all the slab has been poured in the center of it, the masonry walls on the sides have all come up and we've also got all the slab on deck for the second floor of that is all poured as well. And finally, it's just another view of the gym from the opposite diagonal angle of it. You see everything in place, it's all going in. I believe that's what I have tonight. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Any questions for Mr. Mareska? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda we have the athletic complex presentation with Grimmon Parker.
Some of the newer members of the school board have not met with us before, so we're excited to be here. I'm Jim Boyd. To my right is Steve Munt, we both work in the Charlottesville studio. We've been working on this for a little while and are very excited to show this to you. Steve's gonna move his computer over here, I'm told, and... Okay. That's fine. Steve, do you wanna do the talking?
Yes, yeah, I'm just gonna make sure that it's actually still on screen.
He's the English major. But he's already written a novel. Don't let him fool you.
Okay, as usual, I'm going to start with the slide that you already saw the last time, just to refresh your memory of where we were the last time and some of you didn't see this the last time, but this slide is just showing what the site is gonna look like when the school is finished, but the existing school has not yet been torn down. So the next slide shows what happens when the existing school gets torn down, you just have a sort of open green field there and that will set the stage to move forward with the athletics complex. We've not, all the dim lights are, can y'all see this okay? So just starting with that really big overview so that you can see all the way down to your middle school, but here's, zoom in a little closer and this in the upper right there is some rough cost estimated figures, it's not really cost estimating, it's at this point it's probable cost projections. We had said that the football and soccer stadium was gonna be in the 5.96 million dollar range. The fieldhouse is about a $4 million building, toilets and concessions building, which was here at that time, was getting close to 3 million. We had a small practice field in the mix that had about 30,000. Softball stadium was just over a million, baseball stadium was around one and a half. And then we said we had to add another toilet room building here, which we would because all the fields have to be within, all the stands have to be within 500 feet of toilets and there was additional cost for that. All this together, we were just over 16 million and we had not yet priced servicing of the tennis courts. And so from here, the goal was to try to find ways to tighten up the design to get the cost down. And that's what we've been doing since then, we've been working on the design, making some improvements in the way of bringing things in closer together so there's less earthwork. Developing a grading plan that we could really get some better numbers from on what the cost for all the earth moving would be and try to build some of the things in the flatter parts of the site to just find a way to have all the same facilities but to do it at lesser cost. I believe this next slide is how we've approached that. So what we've done, as you can see, you still have the football stadium, football and soccer and track and field, softball, baseball, still very similar to the areas they were for, just some slight adjustments. The main change that we made was that we brought the entrance of the park from here down to here so that you enter at a point that's central to all three fields. And then we brought both of the buildings together and by putting the toilets and concessions building here, you can get the toilets within 500 feet of the stands of all three fields. So we've got a little bit less building area. And we also are not having to do as much grading work because we eliminated a lot of the work that was happening up here and some of the work that was happening in here and still achieving all the same major goals but just with a little bit less building, a little bit less paving and a simpler approach to having to grade out the area to get it built. So that's the design as it stands now, we have additionally some images of what we're thinking in terms of the buildings and then we've got some three-dimensional views. Why don't we go ahead and go to the next slide?
I wanna point out one thing.
Sure.
One of the biggest complaints about the Tuck Dillard Stadium is that the fans sit facing the set design. That does not happen here, you've got your home seats here, and we're gonna let the visitors look into the set design. Whereas football feels like to run relatively north-south and relatively west-south. That means it's a shorter walk from entrance to these stands, visitors have a little bit of a hindrance, so.
Thank you Jim, keep it here just for a second. Jim, you make a good point, I'm here talking about the differences between this plan and the last plan and I'm not actually, since you didn't see the last plan before, I'm not pointing out some of the things about the overall design, but Jim is pointing out one of those, so let me just make a couple of other mentions. The orientations of the football stadium and the baseball stadium are much closer to the ideal orientation with this alignment being pretty close to north-south and this alignment being slightly east of north. The softball orientation is not the orientation that is normally considered to be ideal for baseball and softball, but it's actually the same orientation that you have currently and we've been told that everyone is happy with the orientation that currently exists at the softball field, so we left that orientation that way. And you know, what's nice about this is that when you enter the stadium, you enter right at softball and you come up right behind the softball, right behind the press box. So it gives softball a sort of a central location, a prominent location. We also have, we're connecting to the road that comes off here, existing road already, there's a smaller parking lot right here and there's a bus turnaround. That would be the place where your visitors could come in and come in from this side of the stadium and have a bus turnaround for them so that they don't have to come in the main entrance and have the visitors team mixing in with your team as they both approach the stadium. Each of the buildings has a small little building and grounds building just to store the equipment that is used to maintain the fields. Baseball and softball both have dugouts obviously, they both have bullpens, you've got your bullpens here and here, here and here. They will each have batting cages here and here and all three stadiums will have press boxes, the football and soccer press box is here, behind home stands again, looking toward the east, visitor stands over here.
There's one other little feature. Of course this walk that connects all of these venues is a very important piece that ties the site together. But up there by the football and soccer field, we would like to create a place to move the monument to the recping group. So it will move here and have home. We'll move to some other images?
So the first is just kind of what we had in mind for the building. Fieldhouse here has the two locker rooms on the front with their toilet rooms and their showers that you can come directly from the locker rooms out into the park. And circling on the backside of that you have spaces for your coaches' offices, a referee's office, some general things like you know toilet rooms for the coaches but laundry and storage space and campus space. Right up here is the trainer's space and then there's a team meeting room and a fitness center here similar to the fitness center that you currently have at the fieldhouse. And then over here with concessions and toilets building, you have the large toilet rooms on each side, a couple of family toilets here in front and concessions right in the center. This is generally what we had in mind for the look of it, again, this is a conceptual study, there's, you know, if y'all decide to move forward with this, there's plenty of time for us to work out the details of the plans with all your staff and what the right character of the design would be.
We're proposing to use the same brick as will be on the high school so that this building will be like it's in the family living school. Same metal panels, same colors, same color storefront. We don't have to use these large graphics, but Steve has gotten so excited about being part of the common team, it just can't help it.
Can we go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
The baseball field has been flopped, is that right?
It's what?
The baseball field compared to where it is now, it's been flopped?
That's right. Home plate's back here and back in this area.
So you, so you switched home plate to center field?
Yeah, we're trying to follow Major League Baseball's recommended orientations with.
Okay, what, I think we probably need to follow what the coaches would like to have because I've talked to them and they don't wanna flop. And, you know, and they're pretty satisfied the way things are sitting up. So, you know, and you know, in cost savings, this is just me, if you don't have to do a whole lot of flipping and flopping and rebuilding.
Well, there are a couple of things that should exist in baseball, but we don't have images, but up in this area, there's a, well, it's pretty wet. There's some plants growing there that you just don't wanna see, have it wet fields somewhere. That we will have to do some drainage work to if we go that route. And the dugouts have a very interesting sort of reflection and I don't know if they were built that way, but we would need some intervention there so that the roof felt like it was gonna be there at the end of the game, so.
Right, but cosmetic-wise, if we're trying to save money.
You could do that.
And, you know, and we won this facility. But, you know, I would think the best interest of the mind, as I'm speaking on my, talking to some of the coaches is, you know, if they're satisfied with the way the facility sits, we probably could save a lot of money by not flopping it and rebuilding the whole thing.
We certainly wanna do what works for y'all. And so we've been interacting with Justin Saunders and I know that he has had some communications with the baseball staff because he has forwarded some of their emails and some of the documents that they provided him. I hadn't heard that they wanted to keep with the orientation that it had, I trust that they told you exactly that, I hadn't heard that. We felt like one of the, one of the good things about this is not only are you getting the orientation that's normally considered ideal at the Major League Baseball and collegiate levels, but also like I mentioned, we're trying to get all of the stands to be within 500 feet of the toilets. And if this stays this way with the stands around this end, then we would have to go back to maybe adding some, another toilet room building. The improvements we felt like we made here was getting everything to where everybody could get to the same set of toilets.
We have some bad soils over near the softballs. The home plate right now is right up in this area. If softball stays where it is in its exact position, we would have to, that's in great need of some intervention to put some drainage tile in, we have to. It, baseball and softball are not your big numbers, but we get, if you wanna leave them, we get.
But there's consensus around keeping the same orientation.
But there will be work with the existing facilities, as they, you can't play softball when softball hits the ground and sticks in the butt. I know you've been doing this, but that's just not, not good.
Michelle?
Is that something that you could take a look at and see if there would be cost savings if we flipped it and left it as is versus this orientation or if it would cost more? Is that something you can give us some, some analysis?
As you mentioned, the big issue is the toilet room. We have to build another one of those. Those different parts, toilet buildings, Steve, you recall, it's on the end presentation.
What, about another toilets or?
Well, we put the one we're building costs.
Oh.
It does show up, I have a call with you.
And I agree with Ms. Shaw on that, the softball field's pretty good, I mean, you talk to the coach, I mean, he'll tell you it's in pretty good shape. And, you know, if we're going through this project, I mean, I think saving as much as we can to get in the minds of, you know, we need this project done, but we need also to look at other costs that we got across the school board needs. But if you got two facilities that's pretty good shape, you know, let's look at dressing it up a little bit and not completely demolishing and rebuilding and costing extra. Where we could put it to something else.
Yeah, are you gonna show us plans to keep the stadium in the same place as it was so we can compare and contrast? The fields, the current fields, the baseball and the softball fields, keep all, everything in place as they were and compare that with a renovation versus a brand-new, could we see that as well?
We, the last presentation, we did have that slide, we still have that slide, it's on the laptop, huh? But it's not a part of this presentation because in this iteration we were trying to, you know, take some of the comments from Steve last time and push and pull the design of a single, a single facility that has all three within a single fence and design with that concept in mind and get that cost down. But we do still have the cost numbers of renovating in place.
Yeah, is that possible to look at as well? Because my memory was there was, it was several million cheaper to leave the stadium where it was and renovate what was there versus some of this elevation change in a brand-new stadium.
Are you talking about when you say stadium, the Tuck Dillard Stadium or?
Yeah, so it wasn't in a public presentation, but a PDF that we received last month, it showed a renovation slide and then it also had this slide. So I was hoping to see both tonight as well.
We do have that, it's not in this presentation, but it's on the laptop.
And I'm calling Ms. Coler for one second, but just for those of us who are on the facilities committee, in fairness to Grimmon Parker, we have looked at these numbers a fair number of times and I believe Miss Ex that that is actually almost a cost neutral when our call as far as renovation to Tuck Dillard because of the extensive work needed versus building, building you, I think it was.
I think it's worth looking into still, yeah, because we, the board hasn't seen it, I mean, I know the facilities committee has seen it, but it hasn't come before the board yet.
Tuck Dillard Stadium, well, we used to have a track around, cinder track, but that was only used in the spring and we didn't have soccer back then. So if you introduce a track like this one in Tuck Dillard, you're gonna have to move the feet. Once you do that, you have to move and replace all the stormwater drainage. There are four drop-ins at that field, although there's grass around over them, so you can't easily identify them right now. But everything would have to shift to get the track in. You would still have to be, because you're doing a substantial amount of renovation, toilet requirement by code now. So we were thinking that we would put new bleachers on the west side, leave Tuck Dillard, this wasn't part of our study, but we did look at this. Capacity of that would be 2,000 to 2,500 seats. Capacity of this stadium is 1,500, which is more.
1,500 on that home side, 500 on the visitor side.
Right, 2,000 altogether. No, you're wrong, it's like 1,200 I think on the home side and 500 on the other. Because we started out looking at 2,000 and we found nobody's building, new hospitals for 2,000. Because we started out looking at two thousand and we found nobody's building new hospitals with two thousand seats. We cut this back to fifteen hundred and based the toilet count for that. If the number of seats at Tuck Dillard were higher, you would have to build a new toilet building there. And by the time you build all of these pieces, um, it gets up to the point where it's either competitive with building a new building or more.
Ms. Coler?
Yes, so in the presentation, I noticed that the tennis courts are not in there at all. Is that just to be determined and you are still bidding that out? Or what's the deal with there being no tennis courts?
We do, we do have pricing on the repair of the tennis courts now, the restoration of those tennis courts.
So they would stay in the same place that they are now?
That is what the cost that we're about to show you contemplates, that they would stay in that same place.
Okay, and that's a complete overhaul, like brand new everything, or just a renovation of the current court system that's there now?
Well, renovation is a funny word with tennis courts. Because to fix this court, you have to resurface it.
Correct.
So if you take the fencing around it down, you have to do that to get the equipment in. We'll have to do something to, um, probably put down geofabric or something like that to offset the problem with the cracking. Then you put new asphalt down, then a new coating, you probably put up new fence rather than put the old fence back down. That, that number is basically a little bit less, but not much less than just building new courts. They're about the same.
And if we were to decide to build new tennis courts, where would they go in reference to what we're looking at now? Still the same place?
That's an interesting question. I think we need some guidance from the county. We understand that there are many members of the public who've come in this road to play tennis.
Right, and I do not feel that it is the best, I know that this is, I'm speaking on my own opinion, nobody else is on this board, but I do not think it is fair to take away something from the county that's been there. It's, I mean, I'm thirty-six years old, I can't remember a time that the tennis courts weren't open to the public. I know that's my own personal opinion, but, I mean, they depend on these things. It's how elderly people get exercise and things of that nature. So I just want to make sure we're looking at all avenues of this before it's done. I know locking key is important, but so is the health of all the end of our community members as well. So I would like to see what your plans are going forward with that.
Well, we need guidance from you to tell us whether you as a board prefer to leave your tennis courts in this location or move them somewhere within what we call the fence. As we envision fencing the entire complex so that people can't use that as an attractive place to go in an hour when they shouldn't be there.
I agree.
And would you want the tennis courts inside your fence? Or would you want the tennis courts outside that fence so that they're accessible to the public all times of the day? What is your preference?
My preference?
The board.
Oh, okay, well, I'm not going to speak on behalf of everybody else.
Well, I, I, I can, I can say if you make one accessible, you have to make all accessible. And, you know, i- i- if, if we're talking about tennis courts, you know, you have to make everything accessible, um, to the public. And, and I, I understand this may be something that we need to talk about with maybe the board of supervisors of having a public tennis court and one under the facility where the high school has. Maybe something we need to talk about because just my opinion is you can't have one thing that's open where people can go play for free and do what they want to do, and then somebody can't use the gym or the softball field at their times. That's just my opinion. And, and that's part of the problem with the current track and everything. We don't have a track, we can't hold a track meet. We, we can't hold a track meet right now because the track is unusable, am I, am I correct?
Yeah.
And, and, and that's a problem. I mean, we got to fix it somehow. And I think it's over usage is one thing. I mean, we can't even hold a track meet. And that's pretty embarrassing.
I just think there's a way we can meet in the middle, you know, we can come up with a compromise. And I'm, I'm definitely willing and I'm open to compromise. I just think there's a way that we can not, it's not going to come out the way I mean it to you, I just don't have to explain it, but I don't want to rob the people who are doing the right thing from being able to sit out here. Because they're, you know, people, I know the track is in bad shape. I do not discredit that at all, and I'm sure there are some people who are not knowing what they should have been doing, but there are also people that use that, that can't afford gym memberships. That's how they walk around and that's how they try to get healthy and do things of that nature. And I don't want to rob the community of that if we don't absolutely have to. There's got to be a way that we can compromise in some way, shape or form. I don't know how that will be, but, you know, I'm, I'm definitely open to suggestion. And I know I'm just one voice, but.
Yeah, and, and I would say I definitely appreciate all of the warmups comments. Maybe just for the sake of facilitating work conversation, we can allow them to finish and then come back. I'm sure this is going to spark additional thoughts and, and, and may have additional questions.
Mr. Chet?
Yeah, yes.
I have a question. Thanks for the presentation, it was real nice, appreciate it, I really do.
Much more to come.
I know. The softball, the girls' softball field, is that going to be a problem with the drainers on that thing? If we re-flipped it back to the other side? Because when I was out there watching them play, it was a mud all out there, some, you know, all up and down that area. And hadn't that been, I know the boards have been re-refered, but this had to have been re-refered. So wouldn't we need to look at the, the amount of the potential rainfall that's going to be getting in this area? We might not get any, I want to see what it looks like. But I'm just wondering if, if we move it that, because I'm thinking we're taking that into consideration and moving it further though. Because we're going to have some drainage up there.
One of their drainage issues with both existing fields.
It is.
Yes. If you leave them where they are, um, to bring them up to a standard that might be similar to other schools, we need to address that.
Right.
Typically, um, some people take all the grass up and put a forest layer on and then put the dirt back. But you can't fix that for free.
And I know, and I understand that, I understand that sense. When we get a look at it, but one thing I want to just mention to the entire board, we're building a new, a very new complex. I don't want to throw stuff out there. I don't. And I'm sure people in the county are going to say the same thing, why are we spending all this money? And we got refurbished stuff out there. That's why we need to give the board supervisors, who they can come up with, because we need everything to look nice. You know, if they look all nice when we re-urbasted and they put the money into it, then we need to put it into it. So we need to take that into consideration as well without, that's going to be our showplace. No matter how you look at it, that's, you know, what you think about it, that's going to be our showplace. But we need to, make sure we do, make sure we keep that in mind. Showplace is going to be a showplace, if you don't make it a showplace, we ain't going to be there.
All right, let's see some 3D images of that. All right, so obviously this is your aerial view from over Old Halifax Road. The school in foreground, the athletics complex in the background there. Clearly see the football, soccer, softball, baseball stadiums with the field house and toilet concession there at the center and that sort of pedestrian avenue that, that connects them all. Uh, and here's aerial view from the backside, putting, putting the athletics complex into the foreground. Here's what the entrance to the park might look like. Toilet and concession building on the right, fieldhouse on the left. Um, this does not show the graphics that I had shown on the, the elevations. Uh, you know, this is a sort of hardest conception and, um, you know, whether you have graphics like that or not, totally your, your decision. But, uh, but you could, you could have, um, influential characters up here to say whatever you wanted to, you know, welcome to Comet Park or, uh, home of the Blue Comets, whatever you thought was appropriate. You can have some signs there. You could have a logo that over there on that, that plane of brick. Details, you know, we can work out. But, um, here's a view sort of over that central area. We thought, you know, when you enter right here in between the two buildings and you're centered on softball and you've got the press box here anyway, you could do something right there with the back of that wall. Again, what those graphics are, whether it says welcome to Comet Park, um, right there, or you have some sort of imagery on the back of the press box. Those are details that we can work out. But this is obviously looking down the football, uh, in the distance, softball there on the right. Uh, and here's, um, swinging back over the football side, looking the other direction. Fieldhouse and concession building, softball, baseball in the distance. We think that this, this pedestrian way would be lined with light standards and, um, could have banners on the light standards that make it feel like a processional space. And floating over the football stadium here, looking, looking down that avenue. And this could be some kind of a space here with the wrecking crew monument there. That's our last image. So what does this all cost? Did we, did we find some savings? Um, we've reached out to some contractors that have built similar complexes or are currently building similar complexes. There's a sports complex going on in Stafford at one of our high schools. We also just finished one very recent in Rocktown High School in Harrisonburg. Talked to those contractors as well as reaching out to some local area subcontractors. Trying to refine our numbers a little bit. Um, also the, the way the, the grading of the site is grouped is a little bit different. So it's not a perfectly apples to apples comparison, but it's very close. But at this point, the football soccer stadium, our new number for that is actually six point nine four, which is actually higher than it was previously, but I think that's because we have a lot of the grading now as part of the football and soccer complex. The other numbers mostly got lower. The fieldhouse is at three point two, tickets and concessions, a little under two million. Softball is at one point one, that's pretty much right where we had it before. Baseball at one point five, that's pretty much right where we had it before. Uh, all that comes together to be fourteen and a half million. Uh, we have a number now on the tennis courts, which is four hundred thousand, so all that together, the grand total is fifteen million. As I said about the football, I've got some asterisks here, just a small writing, but I'll tell you what they say. The, the, with the football and soccer stadium, um, there's a big unknown here. The existing school sits right here and goes this way. The question is, when that building is demolished, what happens with the rubble? To what extent can that rubble be crushed up and used in place that's filled or has to be called off? How much earthwork are we left over with after the construction of the current school? Um, that we can use to spread on the site? There's a number of unknowns, so we've made some, some broad assumptions. Another part of this that's unknown is, you know, how much of the grading to level this area can actually be done by the demolition contractor when they finish their work versus what goes into the scope of the athletics contractor when they come to do their work? So we've made some, what we believe to be conservative, responsible assumptions. But there is a fairly large asterisk that goes with that six point nine number on the football stadium. The second, uh, point that I would make is that we have an escalation factor here. The escalation is only two percent, which if you know what escalation has been the last few years, that seems like a shockingly low number. But what we're seeing in the pricing from some of the contractors that we've spoken to is that for some types of construction that are relevant here, uh, we're beginning to see some, some de-escalation. You know, some contractors are a little more concerned about, uh, workload in the future and some numbers are coming down. So, uh, the two percent is what we've got right now for escalation. And then finally, I just want to point out, these are still, just as last time, construction costs only. This does not include any furniture or equipment. I mean, includes some of the equipment, like, you know, obviously goalposts and soccer goals, that kind of stuff, that's, that's in there. But inside your fieldhouse, for instance, uh, we do have laundry equipment in that estimate. Um, but, uh, like in the fitness center, for instance, all the workout equipment, that's not in this number. Now, maybe you're just relocating the equipment that you've got, in which case that number could be very low. Furniture, there's no furnishings in these numbers, that's also part of soft costs. But maybe you have furniture currently in your school that, uh, might still be in good enough condition to relocate. I don't know, those are decisions that are details, uh, for down the road. But AE fees, CM fees, geotechnical costs, special inspections, um, permitting costs, all those things that are called project soft costs are not in these numbers. These are construction cost dollars only.
You had asked earlier about the cost of re-change of the tennis courts. The number was actually, it was like three hundred and ninety-two thousand.
Three hundred and ninety-two thousand.
So we just call that four hundred thousand dollars. That's roughly what it costs to resurface and buy new, um, cushions that put on the tennis courts and put up new things. Talking about the unknowns, we have a lot of soil stored on site right now. I guess it's sitting, best guess is, I don't know, right in there. And that's all, um, material that was scooped out of the ponds and bottoms to the large lot. We don't know how much of that we can reuse. I think there's a hundred thousand dollar allowance in there for mixing gypsum with it to make it, dry it out, to make it into something that we can use. So, um, there, there, there's quite a bit of, uh, that we'll have to figure out after or during demolition as to, um, the grading. We do want to balance cut and build. Within this scheme, we could make this lower. We need it, dirt or other things. But, um, we don't have to decide that now. I think that it'd take about ten months to complete this. That cannot start until the existing school is demolished and have the work going. So Vince, how long does that process take? Six months, seven?
I would say six months.
So you can't start demolishing until we moved all of your furniture out. And we've done, or Vince's group has done the asbestos and hazardous materials removal in advance of that. So it's going to be a while before you see this and a lot of time to go back and revisit things. It's not a decision we have to make today.
I think, uh, Mr. Wood, I think Ms. Coler has a couple of questions.
All right, so first question is, sorry, I'm blind, but does that say fifteen million? Grand total is fifteen million?
That's right.
But you said there's a lot of things that that does not include. So realistically, if you had to throw a ballpark number out there right now, what do you think we're looking at spending? Because if that number's not accurate, it's kind of a moot point.
Well, we believe that it's as accurate as you can be at this stage, at a conceptual stage. It's just that it's construction cost numbers, not project cost numbers, which, uh, you know, the, the project costs of this, that what we call the soft costs, um, would not be as high as a percentage as they would be on something like a high school. I mean, you don't, you know, stadium like this, you obviously just don't have the same amount of classroom technology and furnishings and, um, your day fees will likely not be as high as a percentage, um, of the construction cost. But I, I certainly would think that you would want to, um, have at least another ten percent added on to that for project soft costs. And then, you know, responsibly, you need to have a, a, just sort of a contingency in mind just because at this stage of the game, there's still so many unknowns. So to that fifteen million, you know, as a budget figure, I think you'd want to be, having a placeholder between sixteen and a half and seventeen million.
My second question is, um, when you talk about, like, you've spoken with contractors and people who actually build this, have you spoken to anybody from this county, from Halifax County, about doing any of this? Because I mean.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that our local people have the opportunity. If we vote to do this, we're putting our money back in our own economy.
One of the, um, things you have to keep in mind, just about everything on this project was bid out to specialty contractors. I think there's anybody in Halifax County who surfaces running tracks? That might be somebody from, from North Carolina or Richmond, I don't know.
I understand that, I just think the people in our area should have the op, the opportunity to at least be able to do something. I mean, how cool would that be able to be for a kid to say that, you know, their dad's company helped build something as extravagant as this is supposed to be? You know, I, I think it would be.
As far as the opportunity that you're talking about, I, I can pretty much guarantee that. I mean, the, the, no matter what delivery method is chosen, uh, the work will be bid out. And it's a fact that the closer bidders are, the more economical they can be.
Right.
So when general contractors or construction managers are bidding out work, they're going to prioritize the folks that are closest in because they just are. because they just assume naturally that there's a good chance I'll get my best number from people that are close by.
Thank you guys for bringing this to us. First question, what do you need from us if we, as a board, decide to move forward? What do you, do you need anything from us tonight? Is, do you need more design work that needs to be done? We need funding? We just need the board to agree on what we're looking for?
I'm not sure I have answers to that. We don't need anything tonight, you know, like Jim said, you know, there's a long time here before you would actually have to start building this. There's plenty of time to do the design work. So, you know, what we want us to do next is, you know, we're looking, you all to say what you think that the next step should be, if we go into a waiting period here? Or if you all need some time to discuss it and get back to us?
So if I understand, the next steps is you've gotten us to this point. We need to decide if we like this or if we want changes? Or is that, I'm trying to make sure that we're doing what's next to move forward with this project.
Well, if you are intent on keeping softball and baseball where they are currently, I know we have a graphic of that. We can provide you a little more information on cost of what it would take to correct a couple of efficiencies in the current situation because you can weigh that in your thinking. But outside of that, I don't know. At some point, you have to pick a scheme where to decide to go or not go.
Okay.
We have a lot of competition.
So I think a couple of the open questions that we have as a board is, to make decisions on is the public space, what do we do with that? Tennis courts versus public use of stuff? My position from the layout, one of our biggest issues we have right now is security with everything that's spread across the campus. And students can go off the backside and go to people's houses and do all kinds of stuff. From a security standpoint, having it in one complex and fenced in, for me, is a very high priority. I really like how you have centralized it so we don't have multiple concession stands and toilets and stuff. So being able to switch that around, I think, is really important. I think tennis courts are very important. I think the risk is a little bit lower if those would be outside of the fence versus inside. You don't have a thousand people coming to watch tennis. So I would be okay if that was outside the fence, but everything else being fenced in and community can still use those. Or we have practice fields and work something out to maintain the practice fields, maybe with the board of supervisors, so that the public could continue to use those as well. I think we need to perhaps have a meeting with the board of supervisors, if we're ready for that at this point, to talk about the public use and how we want to proceed. Is that a step that we are ready for?
I don't, I don't think so, because I'm with Ms. Hicks. I need to see the slides of the renovation versus a complete tear down and redo first. Correct. I have not seen that.
That was not included in our scope of work when we set out. We provided information on it because we viewed that somebody's going to ask.
Could you provide that information to me, though? I think I was maybe not on the board when that information was provided. I don't have that information myself.
But we have information that I think can answer your question.
Okay.
So I think the two, the two cost estimates that we're looking at is the renovation numbers and then if there is a difference in cost for the orientation of the baseball field, if it increases or decreases, if we keep it this way or keep it as is currently. Those were the two numbers that I had listed as still open.
And Ms. Hicks, someone called me just one second. I did want to ask Mr. Mareska, I know you're not part of this presentation, but I am going to put you on the spot for just a moment. I know throughout the high school construction project, you know, there's operational savings that we achieved throughout the process. And then you had experience with projects like this as well. Was that something where you envisioned that you can achieve operational savings throughout the process?
Yes. Any saves that we achieved from phase one, which is going all the way through demolition of your existing building, we're looking at ways to save money so we can't roll that money into the next phase two for the athletic facilities. Certain things we're looking at, like using some of the material that we crush up from the existing building, some of that material was good for build, we crush it up and put it in place and bury it there. So there are some things we're looking at, ways to save money. In addition to all the contingency that we have not spent yet, we have allowances and contingency we haven't spent yet. I can't tell you how much we'll have left and we're done specifically. But I don't expect, I don't expect to use it all.
Ms. Hicks, I think you have questions.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm a sports person. I think we need updates for sure. I ran track, high school, college. I've coached. My team got second in state. So I think we have a lot to offer in sports and it teaches kids a lot. My concern is the price tag. Quite frankly, I think it needs to be cut in half because right now, in available funds, there's about twelve million dollars in Halifax that's untouched, twelve million. And I can explain where that's coming from. Carryover funds is about four million and that sits with board of supervisors. And historically, that has been used for teacher salaries and capital improvement. We also have another pot of money that's about eight million sitting on from the bond. We have a hundred five million dollar bond and there's interest occurring. So there's two pots of money. However, we still owe, the board has a commitment of about two and a half million for the high school still. So we have to account for two and a half million. In addition, we have a capital improvement plan. And from my estimates, we have about three and a half million for capital improvement that we still have to do. And I know there's reports coming on that, but we still owe it to the other schools and staff members and kids in this county to take care of our other schools. And I don't think we can neglect capital improvement. So at some point of that twelve million, I think we need to hold some for capital improvement. And furthermore, this year, we've already used some of our extra money for security and the Stay With Us, Grow With Us Halifax. So in the future, we might need some money for security and for that teacher incentive program as well. So all that to say is, we do have about twelve million in funds. But there's a lot of stuff that I think this board needs to be responsible and also pay for with that twelve million. So to take all that and just give it to the athletic fields, I think, is irresponsible of the board. So for that reason, I'd like to make a motion to see what renovation would cost, would be as far as drawings like this and then get that out for bids.
What was that last part?
Huh?
The last part of that motion?
To see how much it costs RFP bids. So I would like to see bids for both this, but also as the renovation. So I don't know how that process goes, but basically...
When you say bids, are you talking about an estimate similar to what we're doing for the new facility? Or are you looking for hard construction bids?
I would like to see drawings like this and have prices from multiple companies to see what a true renovation would cost, so we can compare.
Well, that would require full construction documents for both to get truly competitive bids.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I understand where you want to end up.
Well, my concern, and I heard this concern with the high school, was that the company that did this part, so they showed plans slightly for renovation and the rebuild, was they kept the rebuild high enough so it justified that a rebuild was completely necessary. And I want for the county to see what an actual, like, to keep the stadium in place. So if we drained the softball and the baseball fields, if we resurfaced the track and the tennis courts, I mean, those, I don't think are that much. If I remember correctly, it's the press box and the stadium that is probably the highest. So that's what I would like to see, how we can get down, if we can get other voices in the picture. I don't know how you do that.
So I know you were making a motion to state that...
Yeah. My motion is to see these drawings for a renovation and some estimates.
My second half motion.
So we have a motion on the floor that's been quietly seconded. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Clay?
And I, this is new to me, so this is why I've got to ask the question. I'm sorry. Okay. At what point do we have to, during all this? I think we've got to have some conversation in a joint facilities meeting with the board of supervisors to find out where they stand and where they can help us at on this project. I mean, I think a tou, what's that?
What if they don't?
Well, I mean...
Give us any money at all?
And that's fine. I mean, if they don't, that's on them. I mean, if they don't give us any money, they don't help us on it. I mean, that's their decision. We can't change their decision. But I think we need to discuss it with them. I think we need to discuss what they're going to, if they're going to help us, if they want to help us, if they don't want to help us. If they don't want to help us, then we know where we stand at. If they do want to help us, I think we've got to have some type of discussion of what they would like to see and how they would help us. But I think our whole goal is to get this under one facility for security reasons. We preach about security and our kids and our safety. And I'll just tell you, right now, the way it's set up, it's not secure. It's come when somebody's done it for twenty seven years. It's not secure.
I do not disagree with what you say in any way, shape, or form. I also want to make sure, I mean, we have, how many schools, Dr. Huskins, do we have besides this one? It's a few. So I feel like... Sorry if this offends anybody or hurts anybody's feelings. I'm just going to speak my piece and then we can do with whatever you guys want to do. But I feel like we're looking at something brand new and shiny and that's fantastic. But in what reality do, does anybody go buy a house that you don't know exactly what the figure is going to be? You don't know exactly what it's going to cost? You don't know, like, what, God forbid, what if something like COVID comes back out and the prices of materials skyrocket and we're back, this thing triples in price? We do not have that kind of money. Not to mention, what if we, something happens and we go into recession? We can't pay teacher salaries because we're locked into this thing. You guys really willing to put all that, like, to put all that in a chance to build an athletic department that is, it's not a hundred percent necessity? Now, if he can get the money dramatically down, like Ms. Hicks said, I mean, I'll be willing to play ball, but fifteen million dol, no, excuse me, what did he say? Sixteen point five to seventeen million as a buffer to build this right now when we've got other schools that still need to have stuff done? We need to make sure, Jimmy, you hopping on security, we need to make sure we can still pay the ones we have to take care of the schools we have now? And to make sure that the capital improvements can be done so that we don't end up having to close another, a small school because we chose to do this instead? I just want to make sure that we're looking at the long-term potential problems of this versus a shiny new athletics. I played sports when I was a kid. It's cool. And I know that this is how some people get, the only way some people can go to college. And I don't discredit that whatsoever. Right, Keith, I know how important this stuff is to you. You know, all of your kids, most of your kids play sports. This is a big deal. But there are so many what ifs in this scenario. I just don't think until we have a down to the penny, as close as you can get, figure amount, it is not smart business to even remotely move forward with this until you can tell us exactly, you know, like I said, I know you can't give down to the penny, but as close as possible, what this thing is going to cost. And I also think we're doing the county a disservice by not looking at what the renovations could be. Rome was not built in a day. It just wasn't. Not saying that we can't do this. I don't know why we have to do it all at one time. Why not pick a project like anybody does? Pick a project, build it, move on to the next thing.
And I agree with you, but that's the point of going to the board of supervisors and asking, can you help us? I don't think it's a saying to say, can you help us? Are you willing to help us with this project? We don't know until we ask. And I'm not saying I'm for sixteen million. I'm not saying I'm for seventeen million. I'm not saying I'm for twelve million. We just got a grant for seven resource officers. That's going to help a lot. The sheriff worked hard on that. Dr. Buckley worked hard on that? I mean, you know, they combined together, they worked together to get that project done. What I'm saying is, we need help. We want to look after our teachers. We want to look after our students. We want to look after everybody. But we also can't do it alone.
All right. I'm going to make one statement, and I know we have Chairman Mason wants to say something and also Ms. Shotwell and those for us who've been on the board for a while and went through the first construction piece. Just the only thing I would add is, in my mind, where we're at, we're in the investigative stage right now. You know, we're looking at conceptual drawings, we're looking at things. We're trying to determine, if as best we can right now, is this even a possibility? Once we determine if this is a possibility, then, you know, through votes of the board, we'll move forward and we'll start narrowing down things. I think we're at the point now where I certainly agree, before we ever put shovel in the dirt and you ever affirm I have what the cost would be. But I think now, we're more, again, in the investigative realm where we're trying to determine, based on these preliminary numbers, what can the overall scope of the project, what's it going to look like, the scope of the project? I don't know that we're at the point now where we can reasonably ask anyone to give us definitive numbers because, again, it's conceptual. I mean, this is, to me, is more or less, is this something, is it a possibility for us as a board? Is it something we want to pursue? And if the answer is yes, then we feel like, okay, hey, we at least want to pursue it. Then we move to the next phase and eventually we get those numbers. And those numbers will determine what the project looks like, to what extent can we do something? And what extent do we have to scale back? So to me, that's where we are now. I think it's certainly reasonable to look at all options, to ask the architects to come in and say to us, hey, can you give us numbers on renovated stadiums versus a new stadium? Or orientation of a field versus another orientation? I mean, those numbers will guide us as far as the next step. So my comment on the motion on the floor is that I would like to see those other numbers for comparison. And then I certainly would agree with Mr. Clay that we take this to the board supervisors because actually it's supposed to be another meeting of the...
Of the joint.
Joint where our facilities committee and the other will get together. So I don't know that you really cast any definitive vote tonight other than the fact that we pushed this along to the facilities committees to get together with the joint committee with the board supervisors and us, and we continue dialogue. I mean, that, to me, is where we're at tonight. But that's just my comments on the motion that's on the floor. And Chairman Mason, I know you wanted to make a comment.
Go ahead, Derek. I appreciate that, Vice Chair Lloyd. And great discussion from everybody. And everybody, it's hard to say that everybody is right, but everybody has made valid points. And a point that are worrying me as well, as far as the ultimate cost of this project. Vice Chair Lloyd, you took the words right out of my mouth. We already have the joint facilities committee established. I think you guys are due for another meeting. You know, if this is something, bits and pieces of this, I think we definitely need to pursue. Whether it is the whole shiny object, you know, that kind of remains to be seen. But I think the, I think a logical next step, and I know we've got a motion on the floor that we need to do something with, but I think the logical next step is have the joint facilities committee have a meeting, discuss this. As Mr. Clay said, are they going to give us any help on this or are they not? That would give us a lot... That would give us a, a lot better idea of what we can and cannot take on at this time. Again, I don't think tonight is the end-all-be-all that we charge up the hill and, and, and commit to spending 15, 16, whatever the million-dollar mark is, but if this is something that we want to move forward, I think we put it back to the, to the joint facilities, have them have a discussion, see if the board of supervisors is willing to, if they're willing to give us some help on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Ms. Shotwell?
So I, I won't claim to be an expert on, on the process by any means, but the last two and a half years, we have learned a lot in many, many hours discussing with Grimmon Parker as well as Ganska and, and seeing it go. The, something we have to keep in mind is, is even if we approve this today, you have a rough estimate, then you whittle it down and you do some more work, and you do some more fine tuning, and you do some more value engineering, you get a final plan, send it out for bid, you get a bid back, hey, that's way too much, we're not doing it, we scale it back again. I, I mean, if we approve something now, we can't have a final cost until we know what we want to buy. When you're going to buy a house, you don't, you, you have to know if you want a three-bedroom or a five-bedroom, or if you want 20 acres, you have to have something in mind to go on before you can start building or buying a house. It's the same thing with this. We have to figure out what we want and then move it down the path until we get there, but up until the point that we actually sign the contract with a contractor, we can change our mind as a board. If we don't have the funds, if we don't like the layout, we have that ability until you sign that, and that's a long ways away until we're ready to do it. So asking for bids right now, we, we can't do that until we have firm plans. We have to figure out what we want as a board, what's our ideal. If then we get to the point where it costs more than what we have, hey, maybe we do three of the fields and we wait on the fourth and do it two years later. You've got to make progress, but if you piecemeal stuff together now and renovate this one and have it way over here, and then renovate that one and it's way over there, it's going to be a mess and we're going to have to redo it again in 10 years. We need to do it right the first time. If that means we do a piece of it that we can afford at one time, but have the design laid out, then that's what we do, but piecemealing it and just patching stuff is, is not going to do it. Do it right the first time, don't waste the money. But we don't have firm numbers until we can actually have a plan that we want and then send it out, and then we can still make changes if we need to. I guess, yeah, that's it.
So we, Ms. Frank?
Um, I guess my, my big thing is I'm not asking for bids to go out. What I need to know is a figure for renovations. I don't, like, I, I need to know, you know, I'm not going to tear the current house that I live in down to the ground without somebody telling me that there's no value in it. I'm, I want to know if there's still value in the complex that we have, in the fields that we have, if we can still use in any way, shape, or form what we have and what the cost would be to renovate what we have, rather than tear it all down completely and redo it. That, and I think the public wants to know that information. I'm not saying that we don't need to do renovations, I'm not saying that we don't need a new stadium and we don't need to upgrade things, but I can't sit here and say that I am 100% for building a new stadium when I haven't seen, you know, renovation versus tear down and completely redo.
So we can share with you now, we, we did get this slide up, this is a slide that we showed to the smaller committee about some of the costs. So what I want to say about these costs, they're a little different from the other costs, in that the scope of the study that we were hired to do is create a design for a single athletics complex park with all facilities and give us a ballpark of what that's going to cost. We knew that this exact question was going to come up, of course, so we provided some narrative descriptions of what would need to happen for each of these things to a cost estimator, and they gave us back some ranges. So this, these costs have not been developed with the same specificity as the other costs that you, you just heard, because those are actually based on drawings, and they're actually coming from contractors who actually build this work. These costs came from a professional cost estimator based on our narrative descriptions. So they're a little more loosey-goosey, but what we came up with before was that resurfacing that track up there, number one, around your practice field, just to resurf it with asphalt, probably around $310,000. If you wanted to resurface it with a competition track and do, build in perimeter drainage, then you're up in the $1.1 million area. That's pretty costly, right? Two is renovate this stadium. If you renovate this stadium, you've got to restore the seating, new press box, new toilets and concessions building, because your toilets and concessions are not in great shape, but you don't have nearly enough toilets for today's code for a new facility. You would have new lighting, P A, and scoreboard, and as Jim was mentioning before, this current track is only wide enough for football. If you want to have that be a soccer stadium as well, you would have to actually widen the track. Well, at that point, by the time you're widening the track and creating a new perimeter, you know, this is practically a, a new field. And also, as Jim mentioned, right outside of football and the four corners, there are these storm inlet structures. Well, the soccer field is wider than the football field, so those structures are actually in your field. So you have to move the storm drainage out, move the track out. It winds up becoming very comparable to the cost of just building new. So this, now, this cost is not apples to apples, because this actually includes the new toilets and concessions building in it, whereas on the previous list you looked at, those two were broken out. But, but to do this, to do that stadium and do new toilets and concessions was $6.97 million. Renovating the fieldhouse, another 2.1 to 2.2. So the new fieldhouse was, I think, was around 3.8. Renovating this one, 2.1 to 2.2. So you pull all those costs together, it's, it's less than building new.
Six million dollars less, give or take.
That's one facility.
Well, but this, this, this is not including baseball and baseball.
That, that's one facility.
I understand that, but it's still six million dollars less than what they just showed us.
One of the challenges you have, if you really would want to have a running track around football, just look at the distances here. That is Tuck Dillard Stadium. Best I can determine, just by linear distance, it seats 1,000, maybe 1,100, something in that range. If you increase the seating on this side to turn that into home, you don't have to do that, but as I said, the biggest objection there's been to the stadium is that you face the sun. The concrete's actually not in bad shape. I spoke with a company in Baltimore that does that kind of refinishing, and there's not a lot of money to upgrade that. It's pretty dirty underneath and could use a, it's in severe need of a 50-year bath, but we don't see anything there that would, would be bad. You're getting kind of close to buildings over here, so if you widen this, if you do put the running track around, you have to move it this way to create enough space so you can walk to seating. This is much more narrow than what a new stadium would be, and you start getting, you get right up near the building, so I'd, I'd be concerned about how close we're getting to the arts building. Toilets are the big problem. You do not meet the, the minimum toilet capacity of Virginia state law now, and if you built any more seating, you definitely have to build a new toilet building. You're not given reprieve from that with this level of work. Renovating the fieldhouse is something that was talked about. I spoke with a contractor who's renovating a fieldhouse in Garrett County, Maryland. It's a project that actually, we did the bridging documents for, for, but we're not working on it now. He said they thought out, they, that they could renovate it for a million dollars, they're now at 2.1 million and not finished. So the, the big problem with renovating fieldhouses is mechanical systems. There's a lot of concern these days about fungal growth and mold, so the emphasis been on providing not only air at a good temperature, but at a, you know, 30, 35% relative humidity, and there's some, some cost involved in that, plus some ADA issues in that building, so.
Thank you.
This isn't too far off. So it would be more efficient to keep track over here if you're going to go that route, because you don't get into the width issues as much. You still have to widen it for soccer. You don't have to, I know you're playing soccer there now, but that's not a regulation soccer field.
That's all I wanted to see. Thank you for joining us. I had seen that.
I know we have a motion on the floor that's been probably seconded, and on the, we're not moving probably outside of the scope of discussion on that one motion. Did you want to restate your motion, Ms. Hicks, and we vote on that before we move into?
Yes, thanks. I'm a bit confused, because when we paid $175,000 for drawings, I didn't know we were only going to get one side of the story, and I don't know who decided that we were only going to get the drawings for a new complex, but not drawings for this as well. I don't know, that, that wasn't clear to me, and that's why my motion is, I also want to see drawings, to see this fleshed out, to see how it would work. So that's my motion, to have them come back to do the presentation again with this in mind.
So if I understand the motion would be to bring Grimmon Parker back with information on the renovation and the new stadium, numbers for each, is that correct?
Uh, well, we saw the new stadium, so I want to see what they did tonight, paralleled, so we can compare.
Have a nice, sweet comparison.
Yes, thank you.
I know we had a second.
I, I got a question. So, so what, what is this, we, we have to pay another $175,000 for another drawing?
Can I interject something? Our fee was not $175,000. The board authorized to spend up to $175,000. Our fee was $145,000.
Okay, so, so are we going to interject ourselves into another $145,000 that we're complaining, and that's going to be $290,000 we're spending on drawings, where we don't even know where we're going to go at?
So what happens if the board of supervisors doesn't give us the money for this new field? We're going to have to pay it regardless, because, I mean, it's obvious, some of this stuff needs to be done. I think we're all in agreement that something needs to be done.
Just remember, each time we go to a drawing.
Well, were the drawings only for, was that part of the motion? I don't remember what actually the motion was, but we said up to $175,000 for drawings. So I don't, at what point, was it a facilities committee meeting that said we just want to see half the story?
No, maybe I can restate the question to Mr. Boyd. Mr. Boyd, with the money remaining in the, what we allowed in the prior motion, would you be able to come back with, and again, I know all these numbers are preliminary, but preliminary numbers showing a renovated fieldhouse?
I think so. There, there are a lot of other people involved in this other than me. I think so. I think we need to give you a definitive answer, but we do have consultants who work with us to, and we have to pay them for that information. So.
Ms. Hicks, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Claire, one more.
Okay. One more comment, then we'll call for voting.
Just keep in mind also that road that goes between all of these facilities is extremely dangerous right now. When you have someone at the track and they want to go to the baseball field, they're walking up and down that road, it's not wide enough, it's not secure, it's not safe. If you keep these facilities where they are, we're going to continue to have that issue versus you build new with a secure complex, you keep these fields and use them for community use, and work with the board of supervisors to maintain them for that purpose, or something. But up and down that road, I, I'm absolutely against renovation.
So just to make sure I understand the motion correctly before I call for a vote, the motion is to ask Grimmon Parker to reappear at a future meeting with other numbers for us to, other drawings for us to consider?
Yes, and I believe the board of supervisors would want to see that as well, and like Ms. Comer said, probably either way, we might need their help. So if, if we give them a full picture, it, it might save us two trips to the board of supervisors.
Okay, so we, so everyone understand the motion is on the floor. Sorry, um, what, let's call for a poll for voting on this.
District one, Mr. Brannan?
Yes.
District two, Mr. Lloyd?
Yeah.
District three, Ms. Sitz?
Yes.
District four, Mr. Mason?
Yes.
District five, Mr. Clay?
My, my concern is we keep spending money on drawings and we're concerned about money.
I think we're, we're still going to use what was previously, they're going to try to still use what's left over the 175.
The key word is try.
Well, I guess you would have to let us know definitively before you do anything.
Correct.
But I don't, I don't know how we can vote on something we don't know what we're going to spend.
We're not spending anything. He's going to let us know if it's going to go outside the rim of what's left of the 175 previously approved.
No.
District six, Ms. Shotwell, now? District seven, Ms. Comer?
Yes.
District eight, Mr. Fox?
Oh. So do we have another motion on the floor? If not, we'll thank, uh, Grimmon Parker for her presentation.
Do we need a motion to bring it to the facilities committee, or are we okay with? Press, you can hear.
My interpretation with the facilities committee will continue to work with this and we work with the board of supervisors. Their committee is waiting. I mean, that's, that's part of the scope of the budget. I don't think we need a motion, that's, that's what the purpose of the committee is for. And again, I would ask that all committee members that we make sure that we bring the information, full information back to the board, so I'm afraid of the remaining members of the board, that you get all of the information. If we fail to do that, I'm part of that committee and I apologize for failing to provide full information. Are there any other motions on the floor?
I have a question.
Okay. Yes, um, if you don't mind, do you mind sending the information out to the full board or send it to Dr. Husken, so we can get this presentation out to the full board tonight?
Sure.
And, and Mr. Fox?
Justin, when will we get up with the board supervisors about asking for additional money? We got any tentative date in mind?
I will attempt to answer that. Dr. Husken, you correct me if I'm wrong, I think the board supervisors are there waiting for us to schedule one other meeting, was my understanding from the last meeting.
Right, we, we wanted to get this, the, this full board, see the presentation, and then the next plan, we, to, for the joint facilities committee, from the members, there's three members on this board, and there's three members on the board supervisors, and so that group will get together next, and probably have you all come back, because the, the facilities members from the board supervisors haven't seen, haven't seen this presentation, and they need to be privy to see, to see the drawings and then have some more joint discussion, and they may have some ideas about value engineering and have some other ideas, and then, and then that would be the next step from there. So probably sometime over the, over the summer, that that would be the next, the next piece of that.
On the floor?
I would imagine, you know, I can talk, reach out to Mr. Simpson and see, their next piece right now is that we've got to have an approved budget for the next year, so that's happening at the end of June, so I would imagine sometime in July, we could schedule that sometime for July. If that works for you, kind of the, the three of you on this committee, I would imagine sometime after July 1, in the next fiscal year.
I would recommend one more facilities committee meeting just with us before the one with the board of supervisors, but I think that's probably in alignment with that schedule you just outlined.
Sure, I would imagine sometime in July.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Fox?
It's going to be between October and November, right?
Mm-hmm.
Sometime in mid-July or something?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well.
Other than Greg and me?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you both for coming in tonight.
It's been a pleasure.
For all your work on behind the scenes of the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda, we have Clay's wheel driven towards excellent report, and Mr. David Duncan?
Yes, good evening, Chairman Mason, Vice Chair Lloyd, members of the board, Dr. Husken, and all those in attendance. I want to say, if you ever schedule an ADHD principal to wait after a discussion on building something, I will walk out the door. I tell you, my bladder took as much as it could, and I just had to leave for a few minutes. But I am the principal, I am David Duffin, I am the principal of Clay's Mill Elementary School, and we're that little school that could and did, and we're very, very excited, and I'm very excited to share with you about what we're all about. We are kind of located in the center of our county, I think, and if you've not been to see us, you need to come by and see us, because we can, I can sit here and talk to you about academics and things of that nature, but I'm not gonna do that, because in the next couple of weeks, you'll hear all about those things, and that's not really my place, that's gonna be Dr. Hawke's place. But I feel very confident that what you will hear will be some good, positive things. I'm gonna tell you what makes our school tick, and what makes our school tick is communicating, is the, the, the relationships that we have with our students, the relationships that we have with our community, and the relationships that we have in that building with our teachers. Couple of years ago, we listened to Rita Pearson, and Rita's not with us anymore, she passed away in 2013, but she was a 40-year teacher, and she went around and talked about what the, the importance of relationships in a school system, or in a school, and how that helps children learn. We know that we are getting children from every aspect, every type of home there is, and no home is perfect. Even in our schools, we're not always perfect. So, we have to build those relationships to be able to have a good, sustainable academic education for our students. And couple of things that Rita believed in was she believed that every child deserves a champion, and we, the teachers and educators, are the champions for those children, and an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection, and insists they become the best they possibly can be. She had a little saying that she started out in her classroom, and our school adopted, and it says, "I am somebody. I was somebody when I came, and I'll be a better somebody when I leave. I am powerful and I am strong. I have places to go, people to meet, and I am going to be a winner." I forgot the last part, but anyway, I made that up. But that's what we do every morning at the beginning of our announcements, and that is our pep talk every day, and we believe in that. And if you talk to the kids, that's what they're gonna recite, that's what they're gonna tell you, and they believe in that. Several years ago, I came to Clay's Mill, and it was, it was kind of an eye-opening experience, and, and I was proud to be there, but one of the first things that happened when I came was that one of the teachers sent a child to me and he came to me crying, and he said, I said, "Why are you here?" And he said, "My teacher sent me to you because I said a bad word." And I said, "Well, what word did you say?" He said, "I can't say it, it's so bad." I said, "Well, well, just whisper in my ear." And he said, "I, I'm not gonna do it, it's, it's just bad." And I said, "Well, just give me the first letter." And he said, "It's S." Well, you know what word I thought of when he said S. So, I said, "Well, you just gotta come out and tell me what it is." He said, "I'd say it, shut up." And I thought that that was the community, that was the culture of that school when I came there. That had to do with the community, that they, they wanted their children to go and know that they weren't to say ugly words, that an ugly word was shut up, because that was demeaning to a child, that was rude, that was disrespectful, and that came from that community. That also came from the, my predecessor, principal, which was Sherry Cowan. She stepped into those shoes and she ran with the same, same, same culture, and that's what we did. So, we have 236 students, we started with about 150. We now have pre-K three-year-olds and four-year-olds, and that runs through grades five. I have one fabulous secretary, and a one, well, so-so principal. Then we have 46 faculty and staff and one spectacular community, and we have to, we give all our props to the community, because if we're not for them, and given us the opportunity to work with their children, I don't know where we would be. When you call a parent and you ask them what you need, they're gonna figure out a way to get it for you. If, if, if you need help on anything, they're gonna try to help you. If you have a problem, or if they have a problem, you want to make sure that they feel free to come to your school, come to you, come to your office, and talk to you, not run over your head to the superintendent or to a school board member. You come talk to your teacher, your principal, if you don't get satisfaction then, then move on up the chain. I could care less who you go talk to, talk to, if it'll make the, the problem go away, we'll try to do it. But we're very excited and very, very proud of our community at Clay's Mill. We are also now the Clay's Mill Cougars. Now, if you ask our teachers, they, they will tell you something about Cougars, because many of them are in their building, so that we thought it was kind of appropriate in a way. So, there I am with our Cougar mascot, which is Forest Nun. You can move along. One thing that kind of deemed us last year from the Virginia Department of Education was attendance, and I'm sure you all read a whole lot about attendance, and some of our schools, we also got deemed with it. Well, you know, we were coming off of COVID, and we didn't, we weren't in schools, and we came in half a year or so, so, and, you know, common sense would be, yeah, your attendance is gonna be a little low. And my theory was that we did such a good job of educating our parents on keeping their children at home with sniffles, and that sent them to school to be, you know, a breeding ground for COVID, or flu, or anything, that that just carried over into the next year. So, we ended up with about a 26% chronic absenteeism, and that's according to, what's that guy's name that goes around, yeah, the, the, yeah, the guy that helps us with the attendance in the school system, he helped us with these figures. So, what we decided to do, we came up with a few things on our own to kind of help with this, and we managed to get our chronic absenteeism down to 8.94%, which is a 17% reduction. So, how did we do that? And I know Mr. Fox is sitting over there just racking his brain, saying, "What did we do?" Well, let me tell you what, we worried the parents to death with phone calls. We called them, my secretary called them, my teachers called them, I called them, we called everybody, and we, we called them to make sure that their kid, what was wrong with him, why wasn't he in school? And then, if, when we couldn't get a lot of help from that, we just made some home visits, we just got in the car and just went on over to the house, knocked on the door, sat down in the living room, had a little chat, and talked to them about the importance of being in school. Now, some of our little devils didn't want to come to school, period. Mom and dad were having a hard time getting them to come to school. So, then we just knocked on the door and just came on in, took the clothes, and just dressed them right there in the living room, put them in my car, and we came on to school. Now, there were a couple, maybe in the fourth, fifth grade, we kind of pulled them to the car like this little fella is right now, kicking and screaming, but we've got them to school, and that's what we did to make it, make our attendance better. Because, you know, there's nothing wrong with our students, they just need to be there at school to learn, and, you know, we want to make sure they smell good, we want to make sure they feel good, we want to make sure they have clean clothes on their backs, because they will learn if they have those things with them. So, when they finally got to school this year, they found out that it was right much fun. So, we have some, we had fun and creative lessons, we, we managed to look at the metamorphosis of a butterfly, we, we made all kinds of good projects, we also did some potting of some flowers, we also have a little garden up front where we grow tomatoes, and I get to eat tomatoes all during the summer, and the kids get to eat a few of them when they come, if I hadn't eaten them all. We also, sometimes the principal will get up there and, and direct them to sing, or even play the piano from time to time, because I once was a music teacher, and, and we participate in all kinds of different things, going to science centers and things that, which we haven't been going during the COVID times because of, because of that, we couldn't do field trips, and by God, we did field trips this year. We had people come to schools with Legos, we even had a dinosaur exhibit to come and present in our gym, and of course, we always like to celebrate Dr. Seuss week, and, and things that we do there. Now, here's just some things that we participated in, we like to do dress-ups, and we also like to have any kind of, of school pride during the week, just gives us an excuse to wear jeans. So, if you hear of a school that likes to wear jeans all the time, it's probably Clay's Mill. And I know that I asked my teachers, you know, "Why is it that wearing jeans is such a wonderful thing?" They said, "'Cause everything goes with a pair of jeans, and don't you want us to have time to put makeup on our face? Because then we have time to do that, if we have to dress up, then we don't have time to wear makeup." Well, I would like to make sure they have good makeup on when they come to see me every day, you know, and also our kids, because the teachers need to look good in front of the students too. So, that's why we make sure we have a lot of pride in our week, Cougar pride, so we can wear some jeans. Now, this is me doing what I do best, act like a monkey, and we did this to raise money for our Special Olympics, and boy, did I have a good time with Special Olympics this year. I was assigned to a little fella who liked to run, and so we ran, we ran everywhere, and we had a good time running. And boy, did I, I did lose a little weight, but I gained it all back. All right, go ahead. Now, at the end of the day, if we've done our job the way we're supposed to, this is how we're gonna get away from school, we're gonna run, we're gonna be so excited, we got so much energy, we're gonna be running to the gym, we're gonna be doing these things. So, that's when we know as educators, we've done our job. Now, the children, on the other hand, we will know they've done their job when they leave school like this, ready to take a little nap, and not go, we have, we have worked them to death, we have just filled their minds with all kinds of creative things, and, and helped them dream about what they could be in the future. This, in fact, is a former Clay's Mill Elementary student, but I don't know who it is, and I would love to know his name. But that is just a little bit of what we are all about at Clay's Mill Elementary. I'm sorry that I had to be the last one of the month, could have had a couple of parent, parents and some children here to explain why we like to do certain things, but we had a lot of folks on vacation already, and I don't blame them. So, if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
That was fantastic.
Thank you.
Y'all like that? Well, that's what 34 years of education gets you. So, thank you all, appreciate it.
All right, we'll move on on the agenda to the unfinished business. The first item on the unfinished business is the policy update. Mr. Lewis?
Good evening, Vice Chair Lloyd, Dr. Husken, school board members. We are here tonight to take action on this proposed update. I will read this update. Before I do so, I would like to let the school board know that the attorney did review this and did endorse it. The student, student's parents, or school administration may request an appeal of the school board disciplinary committee's decision by contacting the superintendent when there is substantial new information that may change the original disposition in the case. The superintendent will review the new information and determine if an appeal will be granted. If an appeal is granted by the superintendent, a hearing will be scheduled before the original school board disciplinary committee. A, in the event an original member of the school board disciplinary committee is not available, another school board member will be chosen.
A move will approve the recommended change.
All right, if we have a motion on the floor, it's gonna probably be consecutive, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say a "aye." All those opposed, please say "no."
Would you like me to move directly into the next item? So, we do need action on, on the proposed code of student conduct and parent notifications for 2024 and 2025. I do not intend to read all 41 pages out to you guys, but if you have questions on any of the highlighted material that is in the document, I'll try to answer those. I do know that we did have one error that Ms. Shotwell pointed out, it was a number error, but we have fixed that since, but are there any other questions that I might answer? And again, we do need board action of, of approval, hopefully tonight.
Miss Hicks, has a question.
Yeah, as far as the Hallmark policy, it says pending update, and I know there was a survey that went out, are we gonna get the results of that survey and an update on the Hallmark to vote on separately in July? Ms. Mill?
Well, I know we have a, if we decide to, the committee, or that, with the sheriff in, but if not, we can definitely have it there when July.
Are there survey results gathered that you can send to us, so we can look at those?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, Mr. Lewis?
I would add, if we will call both, but there's still a section of those that I just do not feel I agree with, and I want to vote my conscience.
All right, if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve code of conduct.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, if there's a motion on the floor, make a second.
Second.
Make a second. Is there any discussion regarding the code of conduct? Michelle?
Thank you for leading the committee, and the, the committee that we did all get together and discuss all the changes. I think we did make some really good improvements to it. My personal opinion, there are some things that we could still do better. My concern is, is regarding the leeway that's in the policy regarding the repercussions for students for the different levels. Basically, it's, it's very open-ended, where a level one could be suspension, it could be nothing, a level two could be nothing, or it could be recommendation for expulsion, level three could be nothing or recommendation for expulsion. That concerns me because we're not giving good guidance to our schools, and we can't hold them accountable if we can't tell them what our expectations are, so that's my only concern with the document that I wanted to share.
Any other discussion? Okay, again, we have a motion on the floor to approve the code of conduct. If there's a question, Mr. Smith, we're here to roll call vote.
District one, Mr. Mason?
Yes.
District two, Mr. Lloyd?
Yes.
District three, Mrs. Six?
Yes.
District four, Mr. Mason?
Yes.
District five, Mr. Clay?
Yes.
District six, Ms. Shotwell?
No.
District seven, Mrs. Comer?
Because I still do not believe that the school system should be paying for a student to go to some type of substance intervention program, my vote is no.
District eight, Mr. Fox? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. We'll move into new business now. The first item on our new business is polling site, Mr. Paul Smith.
Good evening, board members. My name is Paul Smith, I am the chairman of the Electoral Board here in the county, and my papers are sticking together. I have with me our Vice Chair, Matt Cunningham, and our General Registrar, Heather, Heather, excuse me. Anyway, we're kind of in a situation here which we need to discuss due to some unforeseen circumstances. The Halifax County Board, Electoral Board will be required to relocate our polling site, which is currently located at the American Legion Post 99 on 1034 Miller Lane in South Boston. We discussed this situation going back a month or so ago with Dr. Huskins, and asked the possibility of using a classroom at the Sinai Elementary School, and she recommended one of the external classrooms located at the corner of Grubby Road and Sinai Elementary Lane. The situation that we have here is this has been an ongoing thing since January with Post 99, they had been the precinct elect, polling site for quite a long time, and because of some situations that they have encountered, over the course of, from January, we had a special election, and then in March, we had the presidential primary, and now in June 18th, we will have the primary, general primary election coming up. So, we've had a lot of situations come up, we've found that we are now not able to use that facility any longer. We've found that we are now not able to use that facility any longer. And so we are now asking the School Board to consider letting us use the external building there. It's located, as I just described, is located there at the corner there. It's the furthest away from the main building and would be an ideal location for a polling site. The, what we're recommending is that we, that you folks allow us to use that. And the proposal is that all the costs related to the repair and making the facility ADA, meeting all the ADA requirements, will be the responsibility of the Electoral Board. The Electoral Board will require the use of the facility on the first Tuesday of November of each year. That's the general election. Every fourth year, the first Tuesday in March, which would be the presidential primary election. And then, as required, a Tuesday in June for a general primary. That's what's coming up on June 18th, is the general primary. And then on, and then on an as-needed basis, like this last January, we had a special election, which nobody planned that, it just, it happened. So there would be an occasion when we would need that facility for that purpose. On the days of the election, no change in your normal routine or operations of the school will be required. And somebody asked me the question, I think it was Ms. Hicks, asked me if at any time would the, would the voters come into this main school building? And that is absolutely no way. This facility is located away from the main facility, and there would not be any kind of disruption in your normal routine of that school. With the exception of the dates that we would need to have that facility for elections, the school district could use that facility for whatever they, they needed. I wouldn't recommend a storage facility because you'd have to be moving a lot of stuff out. But, you know, there's plenty of opportunities there to use it. The building, that facility does need some repair work, which is part of our responsibility. But once that is all done, the, that school could use that facility for other things other than just that election. So that's what we're looking for there. Because relocating a polling site is not an easy thing. This is a very time-sensitive issue that we have to deal with. I can give you an example of that. What we're looking at here is assuming that you folks would approve the, letting us use that facility tonight, we will need to present this to the Board of Supervisors on the June 24th meeting. And since there is no July meeting, August 5th would be the public hearing date. And then the official implementation, implementation, implementation date would be September 5th. And that would allow us to follow the VA Code 24.2309.2 prohibiting precinct changes 60 days prior to a general election. So we have a very, even though November's coming up, it's a long ways away, but in terms of moving a polling site, it's a big deal. And it's going to take us some time to get through there. So, so basically, folks, what we're asking, I don't know if you had the, the handout that I had, the photographs of the facilities that we're talking about? Yeah, right there. That's, that's the building that we're talking about. And it's, the location of it is the very idea for a polling site because it's away from the main building, it's on the corner, easy access to that facility. There would be, there's plenty of parking space there. We could identify, which we have to do, at least two sites there for handicap parking. It gives us room out in the lawn area for the folks that are representing their political candidate to have their signs and posts and have handouts. That would meet the 50-foot requirement from the entrance to the polling site. The, to make this handicap accessible, we're going to have to make some changes here. Although coming into the side door would be fine, but going out, we've got two steps there would have to be taken care of and to make that fully ADA compliant. The, this is a photograph of the, of the entrance to that area. There's plenty of entrance, plenty of places for the people who's representing their candidates to be without being involved with anything else at the school. So, so basically, that's what we're looking for. The only thing I need from you folks is somebody to make a motion to go forward with this so we can get on with our job and make it happen. But just a couple of little things here. There's 1,987 people in that precinct, and they need to have a reliable and safe place to go vote. So that's where we're at. You have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Smith, or we'll entertain a motion?
I just want to say thank you for the very comprehensive letter with everything stipulated out. It makes it very easy to be able to understand what you're asking for, including the pictures, that above and beyond, thank you for laying that out for us. A move that we approve this request.
Good, thank you.
We have a motion and a second?
I do have one question.
Okay, and any discussion?
One question for you. The changes that you believe are needed, is that something that will be inspected by the county?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Yeah, the changes that you're making to the building, is that, are those changes something that will require inspection by the county?
Yes, the county, we've already discussed this with the Board of Supervisors and the maintenance people. And as soon as, quite frankly, as soon as we get the approval from you folks, that'll start that ball rolling.
Okay.
So that'll happen rather quickly, yep.
I just wanted to make sure that someone is inspecting it.
And one other thing, we will, we will put proper signage out there. We will identify where we will be parking. And so, you know, until people get familiar with using that facility, there will be plenty of notice signs out there telling, you know, people where to go to vote. So you should not have any issues with, that would conflict with the routine of that school.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no.
Thank you, folks.
The next item on the new business is the VSBA delegate and alternate. I'm going to ask Ms. Shotwell to comment on this because she's our city delegate president.
Yeah, so basically, the responsibilities for this is the VSBA will send out to all board members across the state a pamphlet that has the recommended changes to the policy that they've received from individual boards. So basically, we all get it, we can all read through it. You see what changes have been recommended to be made to VSBA's recommended policies and what they lobby for to Virginia government. Basically, the responsibilities is you read through it, and you're the representative for our board. In Williamsburg, you go into the meeting and you will vote yea or nay on each of them based on what this board wants to do. It's relatively simple. I've done it the last two years. I'm willing to do it, but if someone else would like to do it, it's, it's a good learning experience as well.
So we're seeking volunteers, president. Anyone so willing to be. So we get Ms. Comer's willing to be. And now we would need an alternate as well.
I do.
Okay. So I'm not sure if that requires.
I think so.
Motion, can we get a motion for that, for that delegate and alternate?
A move we accept Ms. Comer as delegate and Mrs. Runyon as the alternate.
Okay, motion on the floor, can we make a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is for a second, if any discussion. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Thank you. Ms. Comer, I have this right, thank you, vote.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the VSBA policy updates, first read, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir, good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, School Board members, Dr. Huskins. Including your packet are the May policy updates. We have a total of 49 updates for this May. This is no action to be taken tonight, just, this is first read. As you know, anything that has a strike through is, it's being deleted and underlying is being added. So this is just for information purposes. We'll come back next month with the, with the final version of those updates. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, please. Next item on the agenda is School Board Budget 24.25.
Good evening. So tonight I come before you with our updated and final version of the requested budget. Sorry about that. If we could open the single sheet with the files. Yes. So this is the requested budget. In your packet, I've given you a single handout, the budget presentation, which I'll go over in a moment, and a calc tool to show you where all this information is coming from. As you recall, may recall, in February, we presented the preliminary budget. The preliminary budget was based on the Senate version of the budget. And we came in very close to the Senate. Once the final special session was over on May 31st, the newest rendition of the budget has been approved by the General Assembly. It did come in at $243,388 less than we originally presented to you. So all in all, it was very, very close to what we originally requested. Just to lay that out, it was a $50,000 decrease in state funding and a $192,000 decrease in our local funding. And you can, if, you can compare to the one that I posted to this one, if you like, and then you'll see where the changes occurred. So it's just state and local, basically, which we are making the changes on. And then if we go to the calc tool, so there were a couple of things that drove the decrease. One, a lower ADM came in, and that's based on the March 31st report that was in the latest budget. So March 31st is a day that they pull. They'll do that again and have another number in June, and they will let us know how this year is affected by that and if there will be any changes for the new school year coming. But they do that just based on the number that we report in March so that we have a working budget to present. The ADM is your average daily membership, and that is the number of students that are averaged attending school. And that drives portions of this budget, which are the, if you pull up your calc tool, anything that has a boldface print, that drives those numbers. So if that number goes up, our funding goes up. If that number goes down, our funding goes down. So I just wanted to point that out. That's why I'm including the calc tool for you so you can see where the numbers go up and down. Now I'll go into the budget presentation. So I'll just skip over the intro. I did put all of our board members in it, our vision, our mission, and our core values and belief, which have all been developed by the board, our school board goals. And this will be posted on our website for the public, should you approve this budget tonight. So within the budget process, it, of course, starts July 1 and ends June 30th of each year. We have a process which we go through where we are given our information through the calc tool. Then we make determinations on all of our expenditures based on the anticipated revenues that we see. And then the superintendent approves us to bring that to the board. And then it is in your hands to then approve it, to send to the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors will vote on June 24th with the budget that we approved tonight. If we don't approve this budget, they will move forward with our preliminary budget and then make reductions later. So that's how that works. So we would like to give them an approved budget. So just want to point out that our timeline does change as these differences at the General Assembly occur. Of course, we've had push, push, push things back as they made different decisions at the state level. So I did update the timeline to show that June is now our hefty month of making decisions and then the county making decisions. And in hopes that after the June 24th meeting, we'll have an approved budget, which we can then begin working with in our finance department. So the next slide are the highlights of this budget as it is released. So the total budget is $75,919,461. The local required match, which is what the County of Halifax will have to provide, is $17,301,152. And again, there's our ADM, just so you have that number and we can keep our watch on that as the new reports go out. This budget does include the 3% salary increase for all employees. It reflects the increased school healthcare position pay tables that go up to 30 years. We did add the National Board Certification stipend of $2,500 for those that have achieved that. It includes the Anthem TLC renewal, where we implemented the $10 increase per month, flat rate increase to employees. The implementation of the Stay With Halifax, Grow With Halifax, which again includes the I Teach Program, tuition reimbursement, the longevity years of service, license renewal. And at the final note, focus on our security by renewing our contract for school security officers as we need now that we, and it's not in the slideshow because we didn't have the information, but as of today, we did get approved for a school security resource officer grant with the Sheriff's Department. So we will take that into account with this as well. So a budget includes revenues and expenditures. Our revenues are set by the state and local governments. There are federal funds that we get reimbursed revenues from. There are other local funds that are, consist of fees that we charge, donations that come in, and tuition for out-of-county students, and various refunds. So that makes up the revenue for a school division. I put a million-dollar bill up there so you can see how each section of the revenue budget is broken out in a million dollars. So the state, as you can see, is the majority of where our funding comes from, followed by local, and then just slithers from federal, nutrition, and again, those other funds that we obtain through refunds or fees. So we're really, really reliant on the state funds. And then the average daily membership is a very important piece to that, which I went over just a few minutes ago, because the ADM drives our budget in many areas, and most of it's in your basic aid, which we use to fund our teachers, buy the materials and supplies, the textbooks, all the things that are required. So as you can see, we're slightly on a downward trend here over the last six years of our ADM. So we, I just want to point that out. So as that decreases, so will our funding from the state. So that's something that we do have to keep our eye on. Then with your expenditures, expenditures are totally reliant on our revenue. So we have expenditures that are broken up, the state mandates, that we have to break them up into categories. And so we do use almost all of these categories. We don't currently have the debt service line, but other than that, we use the other categories within our budget. And we build that budget based on the approved budget that the county issues us in their final version. So in order to meet our budget this year, we did have to fine-tune and look at our internal efficiencies. We did that, and based on enrollment, as I just showed, we do have a decrease in ADM, which was reflected in our new budget. So we did do some internal, we looked through the lens. With enrollment and size of our classes, we were able to condense. we were able to condense classroom sizes and eliminate a team that have been filled by long-term subs at the middle school. So, we didn't have people. We had a position that we were able to fold in, and we won't utilize long-term subs for those this year. The enrollment will allow for the students to be in our current teacher population. And that was mostly at the middle school. We did have two administrative positions that, because of enrollment, we won't need. So, that was two of those. And then there was one administrative position that was related to administrative position. So, we were able to reduce our staff and rotate within the division, so that the positions were what we collapsed and not the people, which was important for us. We also have a plan where we are putting out to bid all contracts that haven't been renewed in five years. With the fuel bid, we were successful with the same vendor that we're currently using, but with the flat rate, we're going to save funds. Just a quick look, I've already seen a savings of $30,000 in our diesel if all things remain the same from this year to next. So, once I do the analysis on the other fuels, it'll be interesting to see how much we're going to save. So, we're also collapsing all extra software programs that are not related to the All In Initiative. They are providing, at the state level, many paid-for programming. And we want to make sure that any programming that is renewed is in alignment with not only our SOLs, but the All In Initiative. So, I do see an area that we'll be able to save there. Supplies, same thing. We're going to put out to bid any of the bulk order supplies. Right now, we make daily phone calls, find out who's the best prices. But if we can lock it into a lower core prices, then we will have savings in that area as well. So, that's where our internal efficiencies were done, so that we can come up with a number of $1,666,910 to save out of our budget on our own analysis that we worked through prior to looking at what we would need from the county in our carryover. So, I wanted to make sure you saw that that was the exercises that we did as a full team go through. We had several meetings of all leaders in these departments. So, that was, it was successful. So, I want to talk about the required local effort. The required local effort is what our local governing body must provide to us in order for us to receive the full state fund. So, this is another very important piece of a budget. If we spend the money in any of the areas that have the arrows on your Calc tool, the local county must match it by the numbers within those columns, or we have to send that state money back. So, it's very important that I work hand-in-hand with the county, and we do. And they understand what their local requirement is. And we keep watch on this all year and do monthly meetings to make sure we are in compliance. Another part of our budget is our school nutrition. Our school nutrition is a standalone program, but in the overall budget, it has to be considered because the appropriating body, which is the County of Halifax, they, of course, manage all of our funds. So, I just wanted to give you just a little information on where their status is. They have some excess funds within their accounts that we are required to spend down. They can't have an unlimited amount of funds. They're only allowed to have a three-month reserve. So, right now, we are in a position that we can upgrade many of our appliances, the big appliances. We can also put some of our funds in the new high school appliances that need to be bought there, which will take off some of the bottom line out of our obligation. So, this is just a snapshot of what the revenues look like for this current year. And they typically are the same every year. So, they've made revenues of $3,764,213. They've kept their expenditures lower than their revenues. So, that leaves them this year remaining $1,41,701 in revenue. So, their areas of revenue are on the left side. They have student meal reimbursements, and that did increase. So, this next year, we'll see a little bit more than we saw last year. They have à la carte items, which are on the composite competitive meal index. We have adult meals, and we have catering events, which we are going to start making sure folks know that they can use school nutrition to cater events within the division, if they choose to. So, that's just a snapshot of school nutrition and how it flows through our budget. So, this is just a repeat of, we are requesting that the School Board approve tonight the revised special session budget, a total of $75,919,461. And we just want to make sure that you know that the best interest of the students and staff are our ultimate goal when we are developing these budgets and presenting them to you. And I think all of our staff and the leadership team of all their work, that they have been to this as well. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bookman. I know I asked this last year, so I'm going to ask the same thing this year. The capital improvement plan that we currently have, I think, has slated about 1.4 million. And I know we are looking at redoing that. I'm wondering what that amount is that we need for this year and if that's in the budget.
So, currently, there is not a line for the capital improvement. I will be working with the county, and we'll be coming back to the board once I know what our facility carryover line is. And then we will be adding the carryover, and that will give us, it won't give us a million dollars, but it will give us enough to do a project to that line. So, that's going to, I tried to do that upfront, but we have to wait till the auditor closes all accounts to know where our carryovers are. So, there are other pieces to this budget, but we are not in the position to present those or ask for approval until the end of that audit.
Thank you for the package. You put all the pieces together in a document, very easy to understand, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
I just had one question about the carryover amount. What's the plans for that? Are we planning to move that money from the capital carryover account into the operational budget now? Or are we waiting until the end of next year to see if that 1.6 million is needed?
When you say...
The Board of Supervisors' carryover of 1.6 million?
Okay.
It's included in the budget?
So, that is included in this current budget, and that is to help with portion of the salary increase, portion of our security needs, and a portion of our Halifax competitiveness.
Right. When will you ask the Board of Supervisors to move that into our operational budget?
That's what this will do.
Okay.
So, that...
Not waiting until the end to see if we need to use that savings, but it would be moving, we would be asking for them to move that now?
That is correct.
And then if it doesn't get used, it would go back into carryover?
That is correct.
Like it would go into the...
That is correct.
Yeah. But we would need permission to use it upfront and then have to make a motion to approve the budget?
Motion to approve is the proper executive. Any more discussion? All right, well, all in favor of approving the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
All closed, please say no.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the Division Literacy Plan, Ms. Miller.
Good evening. Chairman Mason, virtually, Vice Chairman Lloyd, Dr. Husken, and all School Board members. So, we are delighted, or I'm delighted, to come to you this evening to share some information in regard to our Division Literacy Plan. It's been a wonderful experience as we have dove into this and as our district has worked towards the common goal of implementing the use of evidence-based literacy curriculum. So, the Virginia Literacy Act, or the VLA, I'm sure you all have heard, was passed in the Virginia General Assembly in 2022. So, since then, it has focused on improving literacy for all of our students in the state of Virginia. One major part of this Literacy Act was to develop a Division Literacy Plan for each district. The goal of this is to showcase and design the development of how we can improve literacy outcomes for all of our students. So, what we've done, or what the state has done, some main goals, is that they have asked that we are providing core reading and literacy curriculum, that we are using evidence-based training and high-quality instructional materials, or you may hear that as HQIM implementation, a screening process, and the use of supplemental and intervention materials in our classrooms. And then, lastly, and one of the most important pieces, is that we are engaging all stakeholders, especially our parents, as a collaborative effort for literacy development. I didn't tell you. Sorry. So, here in Halifax County, what we've done is we've worked collaboratively to develop this plan, and we've done bits and pieces. So, several team members, including Mrs. Miller, myself, Ms. Eeks, Ms. Brizendon, Dr. Husken, Dr. Hawkes, Principal Kelly Franco, and Instructional Coach Jennifer Redd, attended some meetings just to kind of get bits and pieces, like I said, with other Region 8 counties and just kind of working through this. So, we've also worked with our Division Literacy Committee. We developed that, which is composed of various stakeholders, including parent representatives, teachers, instructional coaches, principals, and even some representatives from our local libraries to see how we can come together and encompass literacy throughout our students and our community. So, there are many things that we've already been doing within our district, so we can kind of pat ourselves on the back for that to effectively implement the VLA and the requirements. And some that we've recently implemented, we will continue to provide professional development. So, we're going to kind of go through this. I'm not going to read all of this to you. But the first part of the plan is our school division, school division literacy vision. And so, this was something that we first kind of came together. We meet with our elementary instructional coaches monthly. And so, we kind of threw this out there, brainstormed with them, how we were going to make this work. Because when the literacy plan was first presented, it was to reach students K through 8. Well, of course, we know our students are K-12, and we want to reach everybody. But then they backed it up and said, "We're K-5." So, we're kind of, the state is starting in, again, kind of baby steps. So, we're doing K-5, then it'll be reached to 6 through 8, and then, of course, 9 through 12. So, we start with our coaches, but of course, our vision is like, okay, we know we want to carry this on through secondary. So, then we got some things on paper. We then came back. We met with central office leaders and principals at one of our principals' meetings. And then ultimately, we came back with what we had and discussed this at our Division Literacy Committee, where we had our other stakeholders to kind of finalize what our vision is. So, that's our vision here. I'm not going to read it out loud to you. You all have copies of that, so you can scroll down. The second section of the plan is, again, discussing the high-quality instructional materials. So, we were kind of a little ahead of the game when we found that we were working with folks around us. And the biggest piece of the puzzle was our core curriculum for K-5. And, again, we were a little ahead because we, our county had already adopted HMH. So, we were already using this, and this is something that was approved on the state list for core curriculum. So, what we, Mrs. Miller and myself have been working on is that we are going to be providing additional professional development for our teachers to make sure that we are all using this with fidelity. I think in the past, it's kind of been used as a resource in some of our classrooms. So, we've worked extensively with the company, with our coaches, and that's going to be one of our big pieces when teachers come back in August. We're going to have a day full of PD on how to make sure we're using this effectively. The supplemental and intervention items. Again, this is kind of a rolling document, so we can add things in. But, again, the things that are on here that we're going to be presenting to you guys, we're already using these. So, the Haggerty Program is a phonemic awareness program. So, that's your oral and auditory components where students are hearing those, the phonics pieces. UFLI is something that we haven't implemented as a district, but we have some schools and some teachers that have done training on their own. And everybody's very complimentary, so that's something that we are looking at to do district-wide. Lexia Core 5 is something that was shared out through the All In Initiative that our schools are using. And then Wilson Whole Language is something we've used in years past, but we're hoping to offer some more professional development so we can use these programs with students in different tiers. This is not to say that we're going to use every one of these programs with every one of our students. Our goal is to target students in specific tier areas who have different needs. And each of these programs can target those specific needs for those students. Section 3 is basically what we are doing to provide training for our teachers. We, the Letters Program is something that we offer voluntarily to teachers who may be interested in receiving some additional reading training. I myself will back up. During COVID, our instructional coaches all were trained in this. It's very explicit. And so, we started our first, or our second cohort here. I was a part of that. And it's definitely a big piece of the puzzle. So, we have another cohort that is currently finishing up. They'll finish in the fall, but it's pretty extensive. And it's definitely, when we have participated in classroom walkthroughs, we have seen our teachers who have gone through this training. And it's made some strides in our students and their reading capabilities. The Value Series is something that was shared out through Virginia Literacy Partnerships. So, Ms. Miller and I kind of made a sketch for this past year on how our schools could implement the Value Series. And it's just little snippets of each piece of the reading curriculum. So, each month, their instructional coach, principal, whoever was in their school building, led this through PLC meetings or either during faculty meetings so that all teachers, whether you teach reading or not, because we know that reading, of course, encompasses in all subject areas, whether you're a math teacher, science, social studies, or whatever the case may be. So, all of these teachers have participated in this, and so each month, they focus on something different, whether it was phonics, fluency, comprehension, and so on. And then, of course, we're going to have the additional HMH training. And, I'm sorry, and the VLP modules are the Virginia Literacy Partnership modules. So, all teachers will be required to participate in those. And it's like an online Canvas course. It's self-paced, and so more information is coming for that. Section 4 is our screening. And right now, what we do, our students are screened through PALS. And they're going to be going, PALS is going to be non-existent. So, we were not a pilot school here. Our pre-K students did, but the rest of our students did not. But VOWS is a Virginia Language and Literacy screener. So, students in grades K-3 will be screened using that. I know, I think our folks are pretty excited. I think some of them have the worry of just something new. But I do believe that this is going to provide some very explicit information for these students who may be struggling in certain areas so that way that we'll know best how to target their needs when it comes to their reading deficiencies. And then, of course, we have district benchmarks that we administer quarterly. And, again, all that data is discussed during PLC meetings and things like that. Section 5 is just something that we continue to do, of course. Classroom walkthroughs, grade-level planning, PLC meetings, and that's just kind of go through to see how all of these practices are being shared in our classrooms, whether it's, whether we're using literacy walkthrough tools to see how these practices are being shared out or just our regular classroom walkthrough tools. And then, Section 6, again, is with our stakeholders and just our plan to how we're going to do this. Like I said, we have developed a Division Literacy Committee, where we have folks from the community... the community, and our parents and teachers and, and everybody, and we've met with them once, and we are planning to reconvene with them August, early fall, to kind of see where, where we are and how we've grown. But if you guys, you know, this is kind of where we are, and again, it's a working document, so as we get through some of this professional development through the summer and through the beginning of August, and see where our needs may be, or what we may need to do to change some things, we have time to do that before December is kind of the, is the final due date for this. And then, this, of course, will be shared out on our website for our community to be able to see. So, that's all I have.
Questions for Ms. Mall?
We are submitting the first draft, yes, so for July 1st, so I do need a vote of approval.
I move we approve the literacy plan.
All in favor of approval of the literacy plan, please say aye.
Thank you.
Good evening to Chairman Mason, Vice Chair Lloyd, all the board members, and Dr. Husken. Tonight, I come to you to share our Division Support Plan, a draft of that. The purpose of this plan is to help us guide, help the division guide as we prioritize our work, as we work with schools, considering barriers, and how we can implement and refine different practices to improve student outcomes. And so, this is a template that is provided to us by the state, and I say draft because it's a continuing working document, but we do have to submit this plan to them so they can see what we plan to do and to support our schools. We're responsible for addressing the areas of academic supports, staffing supports, and school climate supports. We're not required to put information in for professional learning supports, but we do have that embedded in other areas of the plan that you'll see. And I just want to say, we're very proud of the efforts that the schools are making towards improving student outcomes, the teachers, paraprofessionals, administrators, everyone works very, very hard, and we just continue to plan to work together with them so we can see more growth and gains. So, this first page, this is kind of formality, where they describe what the Division Support Plan is. So, this isn't anything that we entered, but it just gives an outline of what high-quality improvement looks like, as well as the following page, it gives a description of what the different domains are, again, academic, staffing, professional learning, school climate, and how they all work together. The next page is where you'll see where some of the work that we've put in and what our plans are. Many of these are things we're already doing, but what happened, the state changed the format of their plan, and we wanted to make sure we shared it with you all so that, since education's while we're here, everyone's aware of what we're working towards. And so, our stakeholders, we meet regularly with principals and coaches, who meet regularly with their teams at their schools, as well as central office administration, to make sure that we discuss progress that we see from our students year to year, month to month. In the academic domain, our focus area, which mimics the Virginia Literacy Act, is on high-quality instructional materials, which focuses on English, and Ms. Mall just shared a lot of that with you. So, our goal as a division is by the end of the next school year, our schools will use high-quality instructional materials and provide aligned instruction in English. And so, we've noticed some of our barriers, you know, we had training which were working towards that, also the retention and recruitment of qualified staff, and to make sure we can support the performance of students with disabilities, because sometimes we have different gap groups that have various challenges. And so, some of our strategies are to provide professional development and then make sure we focus on the data, and not to read everything line by line, but of course, our measurable objective is to make sure that we meet and/or exceed what the state requires in English, which is 75% of better proficiency for our students. And so, quarterly, we plan to review data, and then, in addition, we have to outline very specific action steps, and not to go over all of them, but again, we have different training. We had a group of teachers and coaches that went to Longwood today for SOL training on math and English. They'll come back in August and provide PD for our teachers. Last week, we had a group of teachers and coaches who did curriculum revisions at the elementary level, and we have middle school and high school teachers that are doing that throughout the month. So, there are many things that we're already doing and that we have been doing. And when it comes to the budget and funding, many of these do not require more funding that we already have, but we do use all-in Virginia monies to do some of the additional things like the HMH professional development and the train-to-trainer model that we're going to use for the symposium that the teachers attended today. And then, we have other, just different types of meetings that we already have set standard, as well as professional development, that was mentioned by Ms. Mall. Then, we can move to Domain Two, which is on staffing supports, and again, teacher recruitment, but also think of that as teacher retention as well. And we just want to make sure that we implement staffing strategies, that make sure that our staff are placed in their endorsed areas, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students. And some of our strategies there, when we work with new teachers, that if they're not provisionally licensed, or if they're only provisionally licensed, to make sure that we work with our teach, and we have some teachers that have expressed interest in that, as well as to make sure that we relocate teachers if need be, if they have been teaching in areas that they were not properly endorsed. And so, again, we will do that by making sure we continue to monitor teacher progress in our teach, if they are on separate programs or different testing that they need, to make sure that they're fully licensed. And some of our steps there, again, working with the principals who already do this, they communicate with their teachers to see where their teachers are, so they can provide them with the supports that they need to work towards their licensure in the endorsed areas, and again, making sure that we provide opportunities for our teachers through partnerships to get the, to get the professional development that they need to have their licensure. And again, just making sure that we communicate with them and work with them and partner with them to make sure that they can complete these in a timely manner. And then, we'll move to Division, Domain Four, next one, which is on school climate support. And as a division, our focus area is that of attendance, and our goal is that we will meet, again, or exceed by being lower than what the state has for chronically absent students, and not just all students, but making sure that we're focusing on different subgroups of students as well. And one of the strategies there is using all-in funds, is to hire an additional Division Attendance Officer, so that we can have two people making the communications and running the legwork, to work with our families and our schools, to have students in the building, and also to continue to create out-of-school time for students, like we had the Saturday Academies we started this year, in addition to after-school and before-school programs that schools may have had, so that students can recover attendance, but most importantly, to fill in any learning gaps that they have. And so, we will continuously monitor chronic absenteeism for all students and also in certain subgroups, and we will make sure that we continue to have communication with families following any state guidelines for those communications, as well as finding ways to recognize schools and students who meet the goals in a short improvement. Thank you.
I move we approve the Division Support Plan.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of considering the following specific matters. Personnel, the appointment, resignation, and salaries of specific division employees as authorized by Section 2.2-3711.A1 of the Code of Virginia, and disciplining specific students of the school division as authorized by Section 2.2-3711.A2 of the Code of Virginia.